I just got the email from the health unit to see what days I can vaccinate now.
Okay, we've actually just gone live right now, so I will call the meeting to order. Thank you Nancy for that. Good. If you can fit that into your schedule, I don't know how. Anyway, we'll call the meeting to order. It is nine o'clock on Tuesday, April 13th, and I will ask the clerk to do roll call, please.
Great. Counselor Clark?
Present.
Counselor Donaldson?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Present.
Counselor McKechnie?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Present.
Counselor Wood Roberts?
Present.
And Mayor Roberts?
And present.
Perfect.
Okay, so the first item is to adopt the agenda for the committee of the whole. Do I have a mover, secondor for that today? Counselor Clark and Counselor McKechnie. We have resolved that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting held on April 13th, 2021 be approved as presented. All in favor? That carries. Is there any disclosure pecuniary interest? Well, seeing none, we'll move on, and we need to adopt our minutes of our last meeting, which is March 9th, 2021. Moved by Counselor Smith. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Kennedy. We have resolved that the March 9th, 2021 Committee of the Whole minutes be approved as circulated. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. So the first item of business today is the delegation by Dulcey Serrano and our last staff, if they can bring her in. There was no accompanying material, but she is wanting to speak to our cemetery bylaw. And I'll wait till she. Good morning Dulcey.
Oh, good morning. Sorry, I didn't know how to get around here.
Yeah, it takes a minute to do the unmute and all that thing. So welcome to our committee of the whole meeting. And I'll basically just hand the floor over to you for your comments regarding our cemetery bylaw. Go ahead.
Okay, good morning, Madam Mayor and members of council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to address my concerns about the Evergreen Cemetery and some of its bylaws. As most of you probably know, I lost my son Phoenix in May of 2017. He is buried in Evergreen Cemetery, and that's why I have some concerns about the bylaws. So just to get into it, I guess from the very, the very first one. In administration. Letter C is any complaints should be directed to the municipal cemetery administrator and or clerk. I can tell you from personal experience that currently there's really no way of doing that. I've been through the menu connected to, I guess, the municipality phone number that's listed on the cemetery sign. And there's really nowhere, I've been through it so many times, and there's nowhere that will direct you to anything cemetery related. So I'm just suggesting that there should be like some clear contact info on the cemetery sign. For who, who to get in touch with, because it's, it's just kind of an empty thing right now. It's. There is no way of contacting anyone, at least not from what I've found. So. That would be very helpful for people, I think. And number 19, the articles placed on internment right lots. There's obviously a lot of the things. I'm just gonna, I'm proposing the following. A memorialization space in front of the headstone. The width of the marker and 18 inches in length seems to, seems to be the standard in most cemeteries that I've looked up. With maybe a concrete or a granite border, just something obviously to, that can withstand. You know, the caretaking for the grass, like it won't, nothing will get broken with a whipper snipper or the lawnmower. I know maybe some of you have seen graves in different cemeteries that are completely covered by a memorialization space. And that's just because in most religions, it's considered disrespectful to stand on someone's grave. And I mean, I know I personally don't like it when people stand on Phoenix's grave, but I understand the whole thing cannot be covered. But the top, I think, would be, would be good. And then in same thing, it's 19, but D prohibited articles will be carefully removed without notification for rights holders to pick up in a timely manner. I would suggest having a process to notify lot owners in advance before removing them, anything from the grave, just to avoid conflict. And I also think it would be helpful to have a process for requesting accommodations for religious or traditional held beliefs or other exemptions or variances to the grave ornamentation rules, as well as an appeals process. I think that it could be helpful maybe to, like with these things, to maybe have a cemetery committee again. Because maybe the committee could handle this, these things, instead of passing that on to someone else who already has a lot of, a lot on their plate. And then lastly. In the last one under general conduct, it just says pets are not permitted in some, in the cemetery. I'm just suggesting that animals are to be leashed and subject to municipal bylaws, like cleaning up after them, et cetera. So that's really pretty much it for what I have for the, my suggestions to, to add or change to the bylaws. But I just, I just did want to say one thing that. You know, beyond the bylaws, it's, we're human beings, right? And we're just trying to cope with an enormous loss. Just trying to, you know, figure out how to live without your person. And I'm in no way suggesting that it should be a free for all at the cemetery. But I also feel like it, it really shouldn't be a fight during the worst time of your life. Phoenix was only 14 when he passed away. You know, my, my family and I are not the only ones that visit him. His friends visit him quite frequently. And sometimes I don't understand the tokens and little things that they leave for him, but. I don't really need to, because they're, they're personal, and if it brings them comfort, then, then I think that's all that matters. And obviously, there's nothing, nothing dangerous has ever been left, or, you know, no profanity, or, you know, nothing negative at all. It's just. You know, this is going to be a lifelong struggle for me and my family. We're never gonna stop missing him, and I just feel like if, you know, planting flowers or decorating for him. You know, brings me comfort sometimes, then. Then some, then I feel like I need to do that, you know, sometimes that's the only thing that helps me get through the day. And I don't, I'm not doing anything to be difficult or to make anyone's life hard. I'm just, I'm really just trying to honor him and survive, basically. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not a politician. I'm not a spokesperson for grief. I, I'm just a mom, and I just miss my boy, and I just don't want to fight about flowers. That's all. So it's just some suggestions that I thought might be helpful, and I will email it to the clerk. So everyone can just have it in writing. For any, anything that you guys would like to take from it, but that's all I have to say, really.
Okay, well, thank you Dulcey so much, and thank you for speaking from the heart. I was trying to make notes, but it's great that I was. After that you write it, so I probably should have just been, I was listening and writing at the same time.
That's okay.
Um, you know, and, and my, my heart goes out to you. I can't imagine the grief that you experienced. I haven't been in that situation whatsoever. And we were never trying to have a fight about it, but all cemeteries have to have some form of a bylaw. So we were trying to, and, and through actually what you went through last year, we were trying to open that up to be a little more understanding and, and care of items that are left there, so that they aren't disposed of without care or concern. And you brought up some really good ways to deal with that, excuse me, in terms, terms also of the memorialization area. I think that that's something that we definitely can consider, and, you know, like I said, we're not, we, we were never trying to create a fight ourselves at all. We want to have a bylaw that governs our cemetery, which we must have some form of bylaw, but that is fair and caring for all. I actually was too there a couple of weeks ago on a, on a beautiful day, and there's lots of people that put things and flowers and, and that type of thing. But I also noticed a lot of Christmas decorations, and it was a hot sunny day in April. So, you know. We, the maintenance staff do need to have a way and a mechanism to clean those things up respectfully. Maybe someone wants to use that wreath again next year, but it's April, it's sort of time to create. So there had, if you, you understand, we need to have, have something. So it's great that you're gonna write that down. I'm gonna open it to the floor for questions or comments from other counselors. And Dulcey, just one last thing too, we're, we're not, I never think of myself as like a real politician. I'm a town councillor who was just a mom in this community too, who wanted to do something, and we, we are part of being on a town council is we are to represent just the people. We're just regular people too. And so, thank you again.
Thank you.
Any comments to Dulcey? Any questions about some of the ideas that she presented, Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Dulcey, excellent presentation, and thank you for that. Well thought out recommendations that you made, and I, I look forward to having further discussions and about them point by point and with staff and or other counselors to see if we can work towards agreement on some of these, especially the. One of my pet pieces, of course, is always signage and good clear direction and how to get a hold of people. So I liked that one. And the memorialization piece as well. So I just want to thank you this morning for a very respectful, professional delegation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Any, anyone else? Counselor Clark, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you Dulcey, a good presentation. You're raising an interesting point with regard to, to reestablishing the cemetery committee. I think people need a point that they can touch point to use as some change or comment, or, or at least provide a venue for management and best practices around this stuff. So very much support the idea of us looking at trying to get some kind of a committee going. Thank you.
I just think it would be like a good kind of middleman, you know, like, instead of always trying to get to the top, like, I think it would be like a really good kind of liaison.
Yeah.
If, if no further questions from counselors, I just have a question to the clerk for process and how we want to, because today we're just gonna receive your delegation. And, but I wasn't sure if we were gonna actually consider those or wait till the bylaw comes back at the end of the month. And then we would make the recommendations then for revised bylaw and make an agreement then.
I think it's a good idea. One of the, one of the points that was brought up was pets. And I think we'll, we'll need to go back to the bereavement authority and just ask, because not having pets in cemetery I've seen is pretty standard. So I just want to ask them, although I have seen people walking their dogs through Evergreen Cemetery, so it's not like it doesn't happen. But I just want to ask them to see what their stance on, on pets is. And so, a good idea for us to return to council with the suggestions and a staff report. One of the things that we did want to consider and that Deputy Mayor Kennedy brought up in the last meeting was adding a provision for a planting and memorialization area in front of the lot. So if council agrees to that, then we'll allow for that in our bylaw. So we'll make sure that's in something coming forward. And, and then we'll address the other notes that were taken in this, in our, in our report that comes to council, April 27.
That's what I'm thinking, because we, we don't have to pass the bylaw then. That's just a draft, and so it can come back to, you know. We were never intending it to be anything rushed through, so I'm wondering if just the whole thing would come back to, for, for consideration, every, everything, including that memorialization. Maybe we just pretend we don't want to do 18 inches. Maybe one counselor says, no, it should be 24, and another counselor says it should only be 12. I don't know, or what standard. So I think we would just include everything in that conversation at the end of the month. If that's okay, because once we're talking about all, all of the points, and in that way Dulcey has a chance to email you these exactly what she has proposed, and we can debate it when, in, what is it, April 27th meeting? Hillary?
Did you want staff though to add a section for memorialization in front of plots for the draft that comes to the April 27th? Because this, this is not, we don't need to reinvent the wheel on this. This is something that cemeteries do. So it would be quite easy for staff to add that in for the.
So I'll, I'll lift that back out to council with nods or a show of hands if they want to include a memorialization area. So yes. The details of we can discuss then, then later. Okay. So I do need a resolution to receive Dulcey's delegation and feedback. If I could have a mover and a secondor, Counselor Clark and Counselor Wood Roberts. We have resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges receipt of Dulcey Serrano's feedback on the proposed amendments to the cemetery bylaw, and further recommends that council direct staff to include provisions in the revised bylaw to allow for prescribed planting area on lots. All in favor? Great, that carries, and thanks again Dulcey, and thank you for, for your suggestions and going through this as carefully and closely as you did.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
I know.
Bye.
Okay, and we do have another delegation, so we might as well bring Cory in. Corey McKay is the climate change coordinator at the county, and Deputy Mayor Kennedy and I would have received this report at our last council meeting, and I think I emailed you that afternoon, and I said, can you please come and talk to Dizer? I think you've already been to the Rockland Highlands. I thought I was the first to jump in, but I, I, I guess we had a three week window in between meetings. So, so welcome Cory. Yeah, we've, we've all met you before, so I'm gonna turn it over to you, and you can go through your report, and then there'll be questions, I'm sure.
Okay. Good morning, Council. And today I'm here to discuss opportunities for electric vehicle charging stations in Dizer. And so electric vehicle charging stations will be important for charging our municipal vehicles as we convert our light duty fleet to electric vehicles, as well as for use by the public. So both local residents as well as tourists by providing a place to charge their vehicle as they visit local shops and restaurants, attend appointments, or use local recreation facilities. There are two funding options that are available to the county and local municipalities. And the first option, the stations are owned by Hydro One and OPG, and the municipality face no upfront costs, but rather pays an annual fee, which is estimated around $3,300. A site visit to determine the actual cost would be conducted before an agreement is signed, and costs vary depending on the installation conditions. The second option involves the stations being owned by the municipality at a cost of about $15,000 to $25,000, with up to $10,000 potentially being reimbursed. The first option, or the annual fee option, is recommended for a few different reasons. Firstly, the funding is more certain. Under option two, we don't know if the funding is successful yet, so there's a risk there. There's also no high upfront costs involved, and less demands on staff, since the Ivy Network takes care of equipment, installation, maintenance, and operations. Lastly, installation would happen much faster, so likely in the fall, as opposed to having to wait one or two years. In either option, all revenue is transferred to the municipality, though this typically only covers the costs of electricity use by the station. For locations, I was made aware that the new welcome center is well set up for installation of a charging station. A good location also for tourism opportunities. And the arena and municipal office being another recommended location for use by municipal vehicles, as well as a good spot for the public. The county recommends starting with one or two stations, monitoring their use over a year or so, and then expanding the network in Dizer over the years to come. So the direction that I require from council today is which funding option they would like to proceed with, as well as the number and the location of the charging stations that you would like to pursue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Cory, and there was lots of information included in our package to review over the weekend. So questions from counselors, open to the floor to Cory, Counselor Clark, and then Deputy Mayor Kennedy.
Thank you for your research on that Cory. So it's interesting to see the different types of stations. This is something that's going to be, I think, come at us very, very quickly over the next couple of years. GM announced the other day that they're not making gasoline engines after 3030 or 2035. So that's kind of a net, a net, or they're usually late in the game, so I can imagine everybody else, it'd be probably within about eight to nine years, you won't see a lot of manufacturers producing gasoline engines. So I, that, that somebody coming in and using one of these stations would just use their credit card or something like that, and then there will be a charge based on, on them doing a or some kind of a cost based on them doing recharge for their vehicle. Is that correct?
Yeah, so with most stations, and particularly option one, it's managed through an app, so most of the time it's easy, seamless, and usually credit cards are another option.
Now, are most of these end up being kind of cost neutral? In terms of, let's say, the charity, the money's we receive, or any, any data as to whether or not there, there's issues with trying to cover the cost of the, of the station that we pay?
Typically, the only revenue that's made back is to cover the electricity used by the station. And the upfront costs, it's more of a service for the community, as well as for municipal vehicles, and less so of a revenue generator.
So that being the case, going forward, are there companies, or any knowledge of companies coming online that will be putting these stations out for communities where they will be a, you know, for profit type of situation where, where townships won't have to invest in the, invest in the stations?
And there's potential for that. I don't see that happening in the next year or two. I know Tesla provided them for free and then stopped doing that, and those stations don't work. Well, they do work for all electric vehicle types, but you have to purchase an adapter, so it's not necessarily as accessible.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clark, there's been, there's two other counselors that have their hands, so just if you want to ask a question, you just have to, you know, get back in the queue. Sorry. Deputy Mayor Kennedy, and then next is Counselor Smith.
Counselor Clark covered a lot of them. Well done, Larry. The one of the questions I had was the flexibility to set charges so that we can cover the annual maintenance costs, as well as electricity costs, if that's possible. And subsequent to that, private business opportunities. I just noticed that Canadian Tire bankrupt just put in about six of them. So I don't want to go over, I think if we have, I would just prefer to do the absolute minimum till private business catches up to us. And perhaps that's, you know, within the next year or two, I would suspect, but just so the two comments, flexibility to set charges and private business opportunities or grants, are you, are you aware of any that are out there for?
Yeah, we have the flexibility to set the charges. So typically, there's a market rate that's recommended in order to cover the cost of electricity. For private business opportunities, yes, I know Canadian Tire is going through with that. For the businesses here, I'm not sure what we would see in the next year or two. The important for, the important part for municipalities to install is that these are on our property, and so it encourages use of our recreation facilities, and also for use of our municipal vehicles, which as our light duty fleet becomes electric, then we have a priority place to charge them.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Smith, to you.
Thank you. Yeah, I had the same theme here. Didn't check the minutes, but I can't imagine 100 years ago that the town council was gathering, thinking about, do we need to install gas stations so that we can eliminate the, the horse manure that's on our streets? And, and although I'm a big supporter of electric vehicles, because it's a tremendous technology, and it's got lots of benefits associated with it. The, the concept that the municipality needs to spend property tax dollar to install these things doesn't make sense. In addition to Canadian Tire, I think Petro-Canada actually is the largest provider of electric charging stations across the country. And again, they don't do it on a, on a non-for-profit charity basis. They do it because it's a business opportunity. When we go to a service station to buy gas, we're not only paying for the gas, we're paying for the, the worker, the employee that's working there. We're paying for the facility, we're actually contributing towards the property taxes that that business has to pay. And, and so I strongly encourage us to avoid a scenario where we're getting into business competing with, you know, the private sector, those people who employ people in our community. Yes, we need these for our own electric vehicles as we purchase them. And if we want to be used by others, I'm fine with that, but it needs to be on a cost recovery basis. Not just the electricity use, but also the investment that we need to make in installing this infrastructure. Otherwise, we'll start down a road here that we'll never be able to get off, because people say, oh, well, you're used to provide that service for, you know, the cost of electricity only, and we'll be in that forever. And that's not the right thing for our, our municipal government to do. So Cory, I'd, I'd like to see you come back, and it's probably the Ivy Network from your, from your presentation material. You know, it's probably the right approach, but I think we need to ensure that there's a detailed financial case here that shows this is not going to require any subsidy in terms of property tax dollar. Otherwise, to me, it's not a, it's not something we should be doing. Thank you.
Okay. I don't know if you want to respond to that Cory. I have a couple of things I want to chime in at some point, but did you want to respond to any of Counselor Smith's comments?
Um, no, sorry.
It's okay. No, it's okay. You don't, you don't need to. I wasn't sure. Like, it was more of his, like, you know, an opinion. It wasn't necessarily a question, so that, that's totally fair. One of the things, Counselor Smith, you raised it, you know, subsidizing tax dollars. One could definitely see this as economic development, and that's municipality to do economic development all the time. There are people who are not stopping in the village of Halliburton, because they are mapping out where they could go from point A to point B, and being able to charge their vehicles. So I can, I would see this more as an economic development. This is a startup. This would be one station down at the welcome center, and one here at the municipal parking lot for our own vehicles and other people to use them. So it's not, I don't necessarily want to call that subsidized. I call it economic development. So different slant. That's, that's my thought. I, I do have a question for Cory, which is going with option one, and the, it says on average of $3,300. How long is the contract with that? Is it forever and ever? Is it a so many year contract? Because when you came and did your presentation to county, one of the things that I think it was Counselor Moffett and myself both said, really, we always like, I like to own the infrastructure that we have, yet that option isn't, isn't going to be as quick, it isn't as relevant. We don't know about the funding. That's basically option two. So how long is the commitment with? If we went with option one, can we get out of that and then end up owning it?
So it's a 10-year agreement.
And does that average fee per year? Is that locked in? Is that, what's the contract there?
Uh, well, we'd be able to review the agreement before we sign it, but I believe, yes, it's a, they determine the cost and then prorate that over 10 years. So likely it'd be an annual fee over a 10-year period.
It's not something in five years, we're gonna get a, you know, big shockwave sticker. And is it possible, I don't know. You, you also talked about the charge of the electricity being revenue neutral, so if electricity costs, oh my gosh, I, I don't even want to say numbers, because I, I, I don't know, but you know, X number of kilowatts per, and the electricity coming in is all that the consumer is going to pay? Or is there a way to build in some of the additional costs, like Counselor Smith's saying, you know, we've Or is there a way to build in some of the additional costs, like councillor Smith's saying, you know, we've got this thirty-three hundred dollar cost, is there a way to say it's, this is the, this is the cost that we're going to charge the consumer to plug in to our port down at the Welcome Center, but we're going to build in a five cent or whatever cent per kilowatt hour to cover at least some of that cost, is that possible?
So the municipality sets the cost, so there is flexibility there. If it's too high and not competitive, you know, people can plug in at home or plug in elsewhere, so you wouldn't want to set it too high, that people wouldn't want to use the station, but there is flexibility for the municipality to set the cost.
Excellent. Okay, that's just what I wanted, we aren't stuck in that. There is a recommendation to here in, I'm the only one seeing the resolution, let me just check. There is a resolution I have in front of me that recommends that we proceed with the installation of leased electric vehicles charging stations at the AJ Larue Arena and at the Welcome Center.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Can I just confirm something with Corey? It says in the report that the installations would likely be fall of 2021. Is that concrete that they need to be done by that time?
Yeah, I know that, so the delivery organization has a deadline for their funding that they have to meet, and so, yeah, fall is, I think, pretty set, but we can chat about that.
Okay, and I'm assuming the, other than trenching for hydro and stuff, that'd be a pretty simple plug-and-play installation, probably fairly quick?
Yeah, so they would first do a site visit to determine the cost and what installation would look like before we would enter into that agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, anything else, Tamara?
No, that's good.
I just want to, because sometimes the, the resolution is included in the package, so councillors have a chance to decide whether they want to move it a second or alter the resolution before it's read. So that wasn't the case, which is fine. But it also then says to take the, that the required funds for the initiative to be taken from municipal modernization funds. So for the year 2021, the resolution is reading that we would take it out of our modernization funds, next year we could, if it's ongoing and we're successful with this. So we could determine funding after that. Councillor Smith?
Yeah, thank you. Just, yeah, and on that, you know, part of the problem, and Corey, this is not meant to be critical, but the presentation material provided was vague, lacking in specifics in terms of how many dollars the municipality would need to contribute to this. And, and so, you know, as I said, I, I kind of support the Ivy model and, you know, encourage you to make applications. But prior to council making a commitment, we would need to understand the exact financial arrangements. And, you know, how much of an investment would be there, and I didn't see that, you know, level of detail, including the charging options as to how much we could charge the user in this current package.
Go ahead, Corey.
So it does say, so the average annual fee is three thousand three hundred dollars, it could be two thousand to four thousand. They come and do a site visit, and then before we sign the agreement, we see the exact cost. So I provide the average cost, but it depends on the site. And the average user fee is about one fifty to two fifty an hour, that's in the report as well. But ultimately, that's up to council, that could be another decision that comes forward if they decide to go forward with this station. So more details could be provided on the, or the cost to the public if we agree to go forward.
Yeah, so if we get the, you know, the estimates, because again, before we normally commit to something, resurfacing a road, for example, you know, there's a tendering process and somebody says, I'll do that job for X number of dollars, and we know exactly what we're committing to. At this stage, because of the grant process you're going through, it's still an unknown. And, and therefore, you know, my point is it's okay to support making the application, but we haven't made a final commitment until we get precise details, and in fact, maybe have also seen the options, as you quote, the number of dollars that, you know, charged per hour is a range. But we don't know how many hours we could reasonably expect consumers to pay over the course of the year. Is it something that we're going to get, you know, ten hours a week? Or is it going to be, you know, ten hours a day? That makes a big difference in terms of, of the economics of the, of the investment.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Kennedy, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the first year is a gamble. It's going to be, I think, after the first year, we'll have some idea of what the usage by the public is, and then I hope that we would set it up similar to our sewer plant, but it's a user pay system that covers the cost. But the general taxpayer is not going to be on the hook, other than perhaps for a portion, because the municipal vehicles, if we moved in that direction, that becomes a municipal cost, so there is a balance here to be played, but I agree with councillor Smith that, especially for the, say, the one in the Welcome Center, that the fees there would incorporate the, the annual rental or whatever, and I agree with going with Option One, I'm a little reluctant with technology changing so fast to go to buy a, buy one of these stations in three years from now, find it to be outdated, so. But I think this first year is a gamble, especially with the Welcome Center one, and there may well be two different rates for one for municipal vehicles and one for something else, I don't know, but I look forward to seeing the actual details in the contract as well, but I support moving forward.
And that's it, I thank you, Deputy Mayor Kennedy, I think it is, it's not, at this point, committing ourselves anything other than, than the applying, right, and then we can go from there. You know, it's funny, I had a thought too, so somebody pulls into town, we've got the station, it's down at the Welcome Center, they plug in for six hours, like, because they're shopping or they're, I don't know, they're gone for the whole day. How do you limit somebody when you're, when you're full, when you're charged, whichever, that, what if there's a lineup? Like, it's not the same as a gas station, you move on. It's, so how do you prevent someone using that as a parking space?
So that's one of the benefits of the municipality charging the public for use, some provide it for free, but then if it's free and there's no cost per hour, there's no incentive to move the vehicle. So providing a cost, putting up signage, all of those things can help contribute to people moving their vehicle.
Okay, I think that's really important, and we need to talk to our bile officer about having that, these are not parking spaces, you know, your maximum time or whatever it is, like, if you, we would determine that, that you would have, like, it's two hours or something to the equivalent, and so that it would be ticketed, it would not be, I do not want to see these used as a parking space, even for an electric vehicle, and because they're making somebody else counting on that. But again, for now, we do have the resolution, I referenced the fact that you, you got Delgalkon Highlands before us, that's fine. And I, are you going to the other Highlands East and Minden Hills this week shortly?
Highlands East was also today, and, and all the other municipalities, it's not a delegation, they just added it to their agenda for discussion. So after today, hopefully all the decisions are made, Minden's was last week, I believe.
Okay, and Delgalkon Island did go with the one station at Stanhope, at their municipal office, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So do any more further questions for Corey? We did do it as resolution and delegation to get that more information, which I'm, I think was necessary for council to make a good decision, but this we have a mover seconder to move this forward. Councillor Clark, deputy mayor Kennedy. I sort of read the resolution, so I will definitely read it again. It resolved that the committee of the whole recommends that council proceed with the installation of leased electric vehicle charging stations at the AJ Larue Arena and the Welcome Center, subject to a successful joint application with the county. And further, that any required funds for this initiative be taken from the municipal modernization fund. All in favor? And that is carried. Okay, well, thank you, Corey, and let us know how it goes in the other townships and keep us posted on everything, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so that concludes our delegations today, and now we'll go into regular operations and we'll bring in, if he's around, I believe it is Mike Isles. Two reports. One is our emergency control group update, and hi, Mike, how are you?
Very good, good morning.
Good morning.
So yes, a couple of quick reports. The fire department standard report or call volume is up to typical with last year. We have had some, a couple of inspections. Probably most notable, most public was our ice water rescue training that we performed this month. Or, sorry, in March, which was very informative, very good training. And one note with the emergency management side is that we did receive a letter confirming compliant, that we were compliant last year, so that's the one report. The second report was just partly an update with the, where we're at with the emergency control group. As mentioned in the report, we're still meeting on a regular basis, typically every two weeks, or as required. Sort of big agenda items recently were in this, and trying to sort of, patios again on the main street. The vaccination clinic, which, as Mayor Roberts mentioned, is open, and that's great news for the county. And the other notable thing is that we've canceled any of the large events in the park through till July, after July first. With that report also comes the recommendation of hiring one seasonal staff member just to help out with the park staff. The funding and the amount is there, it's just an employee, they're overtaxed. A lot of things on their, on their plate, so it would help them moving forward for the summer, so.
Okay, well, thank you for your update on both reports, and yeah, the, just speaking to the hiring of an extra parks person, we, we did up our staffing last summer, as the council will recall, in terms of how often we were cleaning the bathrooms and changing the garbage, just Headlake Park alone. And that was needed. People are using our parks and our outdoor spaces, and, but last year we didn't have ice in the arena, so we were able to move some staff over this year. Hopefully, hopefully. I don't want to jinx it, we will be able to plan for having some ice, we will, the vaccinations happening. Although things are looking dreadful, the numbers in Ontario right now, but anyway, the, the plan is to have some ice. And so therefore, the arena staff will be busy, and we wanted to up the park staff to make sure we don't get complaints with the garbage and washrooms. So any questions to Mike on, on either one of his reports? Comments? And stuff, okay, so we're okay with that recommendation? Could be a student, but I don't think we're going through the summer student, but it could be a be a great job for a younger person, and it's got the start dates there. Okay, no further questions, and I'll ask for a mover seconder. Councillor Donaldson, seconded, sorry, Deputy Mayor Kennedy. It resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges receipt of the emergency control group up, group update, and further that the committee of the whole recommend to council that one additional summer employee be hired to work within the parks and recreation department for the purposes of assisting with the increased workload related to the influx of visitors due to COVID-19. And further, that this position be funded from the safety restart fund. All in favor? That's carried. And that's great, and I suspect we'll probably advertise for that fairly soon. Okay, any further questions for Mike? If not, we'll say goodbye. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Yeah, you too.
Mayor Roberts, just make sure that we pass the fire department report.
I think, there it is, look at that. Okay, I need a mover second to acknowledge the fire report, please, sorry. Councillor Clark, councillor Wood Roberts. Thanks for keeping me on my toes. It resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges receipt of the fire department report for March 2021. All in favor? And that's carried, thanks. Okay, next we come to the lengthy public work section, and look at all the staff on board for that. Okay, so we'll start with the first one, winter operations summary. Jeff, are you taking that one? And don't forget to unmute. You got to unmute Jeff.
I'll have to pull it up, sorry.
Well, it's actually included, so you don't need to pull it up, it's just, you know?
Okay, just everything, it actually was a pretty easy winter, not easy, but it went far better than most, it was a, the weather agreed with us, we didn't have a lot of freezing rain and stuff, so we pulled probably three quarters of the plows are all off the trucks now, and we're starting to service them for summertime, and we're getting through stuff. We've started sweeping already, and the southern areas that are dried up, good, and just working away at the gravel pits and stuff and getting them ready for summer operations as well.
That's great, and just referring to the sweeping, because some of us received some emails and calls, went on the sweeping, and that's traditionally all, first of all, we're way ahead. There was a snowstorm about two or three, three years ago on this very date that actually shut everything down completely, so you just never know. So we're way ahead, while there is a lot of sand on the road in different areas, it always starts in town and sort of to the east and then moves north, so it does take some time to get to all the sweeping of our road network. So patience and, and then we'll get there. Any questions for Jeff on his report? Councillor Smith, go ahead.
Thank you, and I appreciate you mentioning the, the sweeping, as Jeff and Rob know, there's been expressed about the amount of sand on, on Watch Road and and, and so I know Rob assured me that as soon as the weather permits, that getting Watch Road done will be a priority, but I up first and get to a state where we're not going to damage the road to it. And I I wondered two things on that. Does our sweeper allow us to pick up the sand, or do we just push it all to the side of the, the road?
We have a pickup sweeper, but we don't generally areas, just because of the time, we'd never get the sweep in your life on that. So it just usually picks up people's lawns and stuff and on the streets in town.
On a place like Watch Road, we'll just be brushing it to the side of the road?
That's correct, yes.
And, and can we brush it to, all to one side, or does it have to go half on one side and half on the other side?
Half and half, it just follows the, the way they're going, it's the same as a snowball is off the right-hand side.
And, and finally, if I might, Madam Mayor, the, your comments, both verbal and your written report kind of indicate that it was, and I, I guess our observation would be, it was a pretty soft winter. And, and so Rob, you know, from a budget perspective, I know we don't know the second half of the winter of in terms of the budget year 2021, but the January to, to March or April portion of it, I would probably come out in pretty good shape from a, a budget perspective on, on winter operations, is that kind of a fair assumption?
I would expect so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, thanks councillor Smith. Okay, so I'll take a mover seconder to receive the operations report. Councillor Clark, councillor Smith. It resolved that the committee of the whole received the winter operations report for information, all in favor? Carries. And next is public work status.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and just one further comment on the, the sweeping is, I just want to remind council that it takes us anywhere from four to six months to put the sand out, so it does take a long time to, to pick it up and sweep it off, so. So the public work status, there's a lot of blank lines at this point, things are just starting to gear up. The, the two highlights I will point out is the, the cold mix, we are trying out a new material for cold mix, which we fill our potholes with, it is double the price of our historical cold mix. We've been using it for about a month, I think, Jeff, and what I've noticed is we're not going back to the same potholes over and over again. So the hope is if we fill each pothole once and it lasts for a month, two months, three months, then it is well worth the cost. It's just something we're working through right now, but Jeff, pipe up if you, if you need to, but from what I see, it's so far so good.
Rob, is that what was used on Halliburton Lake Road?
That I don't know.
Because I had compliments from that, they said, what? Because I had compliments from that. They said, whatever it is, it's staying in. So I, I'm going to assume that that was that they did some puddles on, on Halliburton Lake Road.
It is. Yes.
Okay. Well, it was, there was compliments. I should always make sure I pass those on right away. Sorry.
Just from my observations, we have the, the problem areas through the connecting link and on Highland Street and it's been down there for about three weeks and hasn't moved. So that's, that's a bonus in my mind. The, the other one I want to point out to is the mechanical brushing. So we got some pricing back on it. We've awarded the work to Jim Kerr Excavating, who has done our, the work here for many, many years before. They did not do it last year. However, they were not low. So the price of $1,375 per kilometer is lower than last year, which was a very low number to start with. So I did speak with the contractor and they did in fact make an error when they were bidding the work, but they were going to honor the price that they submitted. So this is a very low price and this is a good opportunity for us to expand the brushing program this year. So I will be back next month, basically with an update on that. And the work as presented will start at the end of this month.
Okay. Excellent. Good explanation there. Anything else in there? In that report, anything else? Counselor Smith, question?
Actually had a few questions I might and Rob, the, the report mentioned sidewalks and Sunnyside and Highland Streets as, as examples. My recollection is that the, the scope of what work we're actually going to do is kind of still something under discussion and, and presumably you'll be bringing back. You know, before you proceed with, with any work there as to exactly what sidewalks are going to go in and whether there's going to be concrete or asphalt and that sort of thing.
Everything's going to be asphalt at this point because maybe sidewalk isn't the right term for the sidewalk heading from Park Street, I'll say north out of town in front of Garden Retirement. In the interim, because we know at some point the connecting link will be reconstructed through there, we are basically going to clear about five feet from edge of curb and have a, an asphalt, I'll call it boulevard for, for lack of a better word. Just something to give the people somewhere to walk and something we can plow. The, the thought was we could do some of the prep work ourself. It's still something I'm wrestling with. We got to juggle some numbers there and some scheduling. The one along Highland Street, we had the discussion, I want to say it was last year, but you know, the years are just melting into each other at this point. But the, the topic of lights came up at Highland and York. So what we're doing in the interim is it will be a raised asphalt sidewalk. Just basically to give again, the, the people somewhere to walk that is protected from traffic. And we will not be putting any concrete or any major design changes in there until such time as lights come up again in the conversation, but I don't believe that's going to be in the near future.
Okay.
Okay.
Further question?
Thank you. The, on the weekend, actually Deputy Mayor Kennedy arranged some of us to have a look at the, at the visitor center on Saturday morning. And I know Counselor Clark was also there. We had a brief discussion of a vehicle traffic passing by the, the visitor. And, and so I was wondering if, if there's a process by which we're going to evaluate, you know, traffic control mechanisms in that area because it even in the short time we were there on a Saturday morning, there's a lot of cars and trucks driving right by the entrance to the visitor center and it just doesn't seem like it's you know, going to be well controlled the way it is right now. So I'd, I'd like to know that we're going to have a discussion with that, make sure that I feel we got the right approach in place.
Yeah, actually I see Tamar has got a comment or to make on that. Yeah.
Yeah. We have a site plan meeting planned there for next Thursday to review that amongst a number of other items.
I agree. Because we built the visitor center, but we haven't been able to, we didn't put any money in the budget to follow up on any of the master plan suggestions that were made there that actually had those big white rocks that are there, they, they will get moved, will expand that whole drive area. Remember there was going to be patio plaza, certain area with some ballers. I agree. Right now cars can drive way too close to that building. So we'll have to do something temporary for this summer. But to protect our well pacing, that's there as well as well. And so we will definitely have a temporary fix this summer. Rob, you want to comment on that?
Yeah. Um, you know, historically, I don't think the building is going to change this, but people use that as a shortcut to get ahead of the log truck. They're stuck behind coming off York Street. So I agree, they, they need something to control the traffic going through there, but we also need to deal with the, the drainage coming off the eaves of the visitor center now. You know, and when we do the parking lot, that would be the ideal time to do it, just to get that water underground.
Yeah. But I was concerned about safety as we talked about on Saturday. Those who are there that, you know, and so good to know there's a, there's a session coming up on Thursday and that's going to get addressed. The next item I had, my list here was the, you know, I'll call it the road repair deposit. We talked about this a little bit in the past, but when people are making an application for a new driveway or a building, you know, major building construction, collecting some sort of damage deposit related to the possible road damage is, seems to be an ongoing problem wherever there's a major construction project underway, our hardtop road getting damaged. And so have you made any progress in terms of developing a draft by law that council might consider?
No, we haven't. Jeff is looking into a new entrance policy or bylaw preferably. It's something that could be wrapped into that, but it's such a beast to tackle. It, it comes down to, from, from the driveway perspective, sightlines are an issue, road alignment is an issue, road users are an issue. So what you're speaking to as far as the road deposit for us enforcement is the issue. Unless we're there to really witness it, we couldn't enforce it anyways. If we wanted to, from a public work standpoint, it would have to be dumped to Carl and his department. But I said, I suspect he would be in the, the same boat as us is unless you see it happen, how do we really know who did the damage? Or do we try and go after the property owner and go that avenue, which would have its own issues? I, I suspect you would see contractors offload in front of the neighbor's house as opposed to the house they're going to work at. You know, it's maybe I'm just being cynical in that aspect, but I, I, I think unless we have something that's, that's airtight that we can fully enforce and we're going to dedicate the resources to, I just think we're going to be chasing after it and probably not having very good results or much success in recovering those costs.
Well, I, you know, other communities have got something in place and you know, I, I don't know. It's obviously not much of a problem in town, but you take a road like West Shore where we spent a lot of money, you know, redoing a road. And, and there are several entrance ways that have significant damage to the road. Now everybody that's driving that road is subjected to, you know, potholes and rough spots. Because a contractor and I'm with some of this in terms of the contractor being there, it's another town person. Our local people understand our roads and they're very respectful. And, and so if other communities have found a way to do it, I think we have to find a way too, because the damage that's occurred you know, is significant and it's costing you know, so like some of the spots on West Shore, you can't repair until you resurface that road again. And it's thousands of dollars of, of cost and you know, significant inconvenience through a rough road to all the people that drive the road. So you know, it was, we got to find a way. As I said, other communities have, have done it. I think Mendon Hills has got a bylaw somehow. You know, folks find a way and it may not solve every problem, but it will reduce, you know, the impact. The owner will take some orders and, and say to the contractor, you screw that road up, I'm taking the $5,000 off your payment. You know, simple as that.
I think one of the things that, that Rob was referring to is like it's, it's one thing if someone applies for a driveway permit that could be looked at, but what if they already have a driveway and now they're getting some mega stone patio put in and the big trucks are coming in with those, you know, great big pieces of granite. So there's no building permit, there's no driveway permit. So how then do we recoup that? Someone damaged the road from doing some landscaping? So it is, it is, you know, like you said, it's a tricky one. I, I see Rob and I also saw Deputy Mayor Kennedy. So Rob, you answer and then Deputy Mayor Kennedy.
Yeah. And say I'm open to ideas. I certainly am. The most notable issue I had was on Watch Trail. So in your neck of the woods, Counselor Smith, where we were resurfacing, I believe the center section of Watch Trail and the surface hadn't been down for 16 hours and a contractor came and dumped a load of flagstone on, on the new surface. So, so we got about 16 hours out of, out of that surface. After some conversation, because the contractor happened to still be on site, he did foot the bill to have that portion repaired. Had the contractor taken off, moved to the next road, I don't think that would have happened. And you know, we'd be back to square one where we got 16 hours of a new surface.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm not suggesting that a bylaw, a damaged deposit system will solve every situation. And it, and it may be some difficulty involved, but to do nothing. You know, which is our current state of affairs, other than that one situation that you kind of came across. To do nothing is just not the right answer, given the, you know, the costs were occurring. I think we've got to find a way here, in my opinion.
Yeah. Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Yeah. Further than that, I just, the building permit idea came up to my as well. Cause that's when a lot of the damage happens when already pre-existing driveways, the landscape issue, I'm wondering if perhaps Rob could bring us back reported in the future here as to what some other municipalities have done. And, and then we can consider that in more wholesome manner.
We could include that to the resolution. Sorry to throw more work at you, Rob, and it wouldn't be expected to be immediate, but that I would call it more of a I don't know what you call it again. It's not necessarily on your entrance permit, but a road damage report. I don't know what the right words are for it. But when yeah, there is evidence that clearly that a someone has damaged our municipal road. I'll ask the clerk to find some wording if that's the so that to move on. One second.
Madam Mayor, I had a couple of other points on this same report here.
Okay. Very short report. I didn't know. Go ahead.
Rob, your report, you also mentions the community safety zone. It's a, you know, DIZART that proposed various studies and documents. What are the implications of that from a workload and timing perspective in terms of the unity safety zone concept?
Quite honestly, it's very much a burden at this point. I, I'm going to reach out to the ministry again on this topic. It's a little more complicated than just applying for a community safety zone in that the one going through the connecting link was a condition of development. So it wasn't so much we were asking for this community safety zone. We were told it needed to be in place as part of development. So that, that triggered the, the, the process at the provincial level as to trying to justify the community safety zone. So you know, it involves processes as to reaching out to our, our provincial member of parliament, user groups and within the town, accident history, collision history, that kind of thing. So where I'm really struggling right now is what I'll call the, the south side of town by the fire hall. The community safety zone will stop at the boundary between DIZART and the provincial highway. At the north end past Garden Retirement, it was proposed to be extended about 300 meters past the DIZART portion onto the provincial highway. Well, since then, the province has removed four of our streetlights as part in preparation for rehabilitation. And when we spoke to the ministry about it, they did a warrant analysis and streetlights weren't warranted along that section of the provincial highway. Even from a pedestrian point of view. So I'm hoping if I reach out to the ministry, if we can come to some common ground, if we move that community safety zone back to the DIZART portion of the connecting link, I'm hoping it relieves us from submitting all these studies and going through the full process for the community safety zone.
I, I think that makes a lot of sense and I can't remember exactly where that line is. It changes from 50 to 60, but it's in that stretch. And many years ago on council, I put forward a recommendation that was, that was approved by council that we change, we request that the, it stay 50 kilometers until after Bay Shore Acres, Bay Shore and Harmony, and that was turned down by the province. It's not warranted. So we were, they still 60. So how can that be a community safety zone? It really should end at the corner. So but like all things, it's, it's condition of the, of the development. And yet it's not an easy thing to do. Province tells us we have to do it, but the province makes it difficult to do. Not. And okay. Any further questions on, on the report?
A couple more points if I might. Rob, you, you mentioned brushing and the, the contract situation there. You know, back at the budget time, we had quite a discussion about the need for ditching work. In fact, you prepared a, a report for us that indicated that there was about $561,000 worth of ditching work to be performed. And, and you told us about Kinesis Lake Road from Patty's Day down to the dam, how three years in a row you'd intended to get to it with, you know, with our own crews, but as you acknowledged, you know, this past winter, you have to get it started because of other work demands. Are you planning to issue some sort of tender document to get a, a, you know, a private contractor to get some of the ditching work done this, this summer?
There hasn't been money set aside for that work. If council wishes, we can reallocate some of the brushing funds that's available to the tune of about 50 or $60,000 right now. But again, with the discussion we had on the brushing and about, I think it was about 100 kilometers of backlog. I, I think if you want to look at the ditching, we should look at the brushing at the same time and kind of, kind of weigh what we want to do with the money this year. If I get direction to proceed with ditching and not look at the brushing, that's fine too. Again, our hope is to get to the far end of Kinesis Lake this year. And all I can say at this point being April 13th, I hope we get there. I'm, I can't guarantee we will. That is our intent. I'm hoping after today that the road resurfacing work is set in stone. I think we could have got to Kinesis Lake last year, but we threw Dignan Road. Kind of a, a bit of a late flyer to get resurfaced last fall. So had we not gone to Dignan Road, we most certainly could have made it to Kinesis Lake. But if we know what we're up against as far as capital works, it makes it that much easier to fix the, fit the maintenance work in in the fall.
Okay.
I'd, I'd certainly advocate that we and maybe you could bring it forward to, you know, to the council meeting or even next month's committee, the whole meeting, but I think we've got to have you know, some, some of this ditching work done. When I looked at this list, it adds up to $561,000. You know, there's a, a variety of roads that council has said need to get hard topped, including that stretch of Kinesis Lake Road. But there are several others there that need ditching work and, and oh, I'm great. That you hope to get there, but as, as, as you said, this earlier this winter, three years in a row, you've hoped to get there and you haven't even got it started yet. And it's not a one day job. And, and so as you reported, we had a, a soft winter. You know, instead of having those dollars, you know, sitting around and being a surplus that's declared, you know, an ex later, this is work that needs to get done during the summer of 2021. So that you can hard top these roads in the summer of 2022 as we've committed to tax fares. And, and the only way that can happen is if you, if you get this ditching work done. And
Yeah. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying and we do give direction in terms of budgeting and et cetera, but we have to leave a certain amount of the operational logistics of it all up to staff, like that's their job. And some, you know, that's, I, I, I don't want to micromanage staff. We do need to set the high level dollars and the goals. And I don't think we, we'll get to it in another report coming up very, very quickly, which is in the road resurfacing program. We actually haven't fully committed specific roads back, which specific roads back to a hardtop and service treated road. So I think that needs to come and then staff know what we're talking about. So in terms of the actual day-to-day operation, though, we have to, we have to trust that to staff where they deploy people and whatnot.
I'm not you know, trying to give staff direction in terms of day-to-day work, but if three years in a row, something hasn't been able to get done. You know, there's an indication Um, you know, there's an indication, a demonstration, but it's not likely to get done. Um, with just our staff time and, um, and, and my concern. As I said, and, and you say council didn't commit to specific roads, council did commit. Uh, to taking roads that were gravel and converting them back to hardtop. Because they were once hardtop and somehow they got converted into gravel. And we said, in the case of high-traffic roads, we want that done. Um, back to hardtop and, and that can stretch a Kinesis Lake Road is one example. There are several other examples on Rob's list that adds up to the five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in brushing.
And, and actually, that's where I think Rob needs direction, better, clearer direction from council. We actually have talked about it. We've said it, but we. He does not, we do not actually have a resolution. So let, we will be bringing that up in the next report or not the very next one, but it. It today, will we bring that up? Rob?
Uh, yeah, and just to piggyback on that, I know this is going to come up in one, two, two items or three items. Um. As much as we say we want to get to an area, w- we do, we truly do, but, but things happen. It's maintenance money. It's a maintenance budget. If we truly want something done, I, I think what we need is true direction from council and say. You know what? You, you will put a, a ditching tender out for this section of road. And then at least though that money is dedicated to that project. Um, because all too often our maintenance money gets moved around and, you know, things happen throughout the course of a summer. Um, but the only way to guarantee something gets done is to tender it in the spring and, and have a third party.
Yeah, and I think in a way, Council Smith don't want to put words in your mouth. That's what he's saying. If our own crew, if we, if we can't keep up. But we know we want to get it done. Let's set aside the funds to do it. Let's, let's farm it out. Let's tender it out. Is that correct, Council Smith?
Absolutely correct, and that's why I, I raised the point because I was surprised not to see something about ditching in this, in this status report. Um, I thought the direction from council was very clear. That for those high-traffic roads, that stretch of Kinesis Lake Road is one example. Irish Line would be another example. Uh, Redken would be another example. Um, you know, there was a, a whole list of them there. They're high-traffic roads. They were once hardtop. It got converted back to gravel. And we, and council said, and was, council was very clear, we want, based on that traffic count, we want to get those roads back to hardtop. And Rob told us this past winter, he needed work to be done from a ditching point of view. Before he could put that hardtop surface down or before it made sense to put that hardtop surface down. And, um, um, you know, uh, if, if, you know, the deputy mayor or others, I, I think that direction was pretty clear. Um, and, um, if we, if we don't get this ditching work done in the summer of twenty twenty-one. We won't be able to get that hardtop down in the summer of twenty twenty-two.
Okay, Counselor Clark, did you want to comment on that? We will, let's, we, we are just looking at the public work status right now, and there is a report. Coming up with the roads resurfacing, and I think we can continue that conversation in that section. Uh, but Counselor Clark, if you have something to say?
Yeah, let's, let's be careful of the big generalizations. Not everybody wants the road resurfaced or hardtopped. I've had calls from people in Parish Line, for example. They were converted to gravel and the road's never been in better condition. I'm not interested in having it hardtopped again. So you got to be careful. You just don't use a generalization. Let the staff evaluate the individual roads, what the conditions and the. Situations are there. We can't just say everybody is the same. Um, so let's, let's just let the staff do their job.
Okay, let, let's, uh, let's deal with this report. We'll get to the couple more down the road, and then we'll be talking about that when we talk about road resurfacing. That will give direction to council. Counselor, there was something. Uh, you wanted to, we were going to possibly add that we, it, because right now it's a be it resolved that the committee receive and acknowledge this report. Regarding public work status, but did we want to add and that? And, uh, committee, well, I guess the committee that holds is direct counsel.
Mayor Roberts, I've, I've written something.
It was about the, uh, road damage?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I wrote, uh, further that the committee recommends that council direct staff. To bring a report to a future meeting recommending a process for collecting a road repair deposit.
Thank you. Well, you're the clerk. So let's, let's do, let's deal with this resolution now, and we'll talk about road resurfacing, which then trickles down to ditching and brushing, et cetera. So can the resolution has been read, Counselor Smith?
Right, I had one other, uh, topic on this report, uh. Um, you know, uh, beyond, uh, patching potholes. Um, Rob, there are, are other roads that, uh, you know, are going to require, uh, uh, work, uh, this summer. Um, even some might say significant work, some cases. I had forwarded you, uh, some correspondence with regard to Cypress Road, for example. Um, the, uh, the property owners in that road are, are now gathering a petition. Um, this is for the background of counselors. This was a road that, uh. The municipality assumed back in the mid nineteen seventies. Apparently, the, uh, the developer in that area of Cypress Road, Bitter Lake Road went bankrupt. And, um, and so the municipality at the time in the mid seventy, seventy-five or seventy-six. Um, said, we'll take on the roads if, uh, each property owner gives us a one hundred dollar payment. And so these property owners all paid one hundred dollars to the municipality for the municipality to assume the road. And Bitter Lake Road is maintained, uh, you know, since then. Uh, Cypress Road hasn't been maintained and, um. Um, and so those, uh, those owners are, uh, you know, rallying with some sort of petition. Uh, looking, uh, you know, they're not looking for a har- hardtop, but they'd like to get the craters out of the road and, uh, and have the thing better kept and, and get winter maintenance. Do you have the resources available to address that kind of, uh, uh, of activity? Uh, you know, during the summer of twenty twenty-one?
Are you talking, uh, like a strictly a maintenance, pull the odd rock out and? Or are you talking winter block?
Rob, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I think we're off topic on the, the public work status report. I really do. I, I'm. I, I understand that there needs always to be an opportunity for questions, but. I know nothing about this, and you're talking about something that we have, all the rest of council has no knowledge about. Uh, so I, I look to the clerk. I, I don't think we should be talking about this. Right now, if you want, but get a petition together, then it comes to council, they CC the clerk and Rob and you and whatever, and then we were able to. Can't be talking about something that I don't even know what you're talking about. So.
Well, I think, uh. I'm, I'm not talking, I use it as an example of roads that are going to require working, asking Rob if he's going to have the resources to address those types of things this summer.
I don't know, but that's not in the status report, so I can't be talking about that right now. Counselor McKechnie?
Yeah, um, I, I'm sorry, this isn't, uh, committee of the whole about, uh, Ward Fu- uh, Four. Want me to start about Ward Five, my roads? I won't, okay? Cause you're very aware of it, and we're probably going to discuss it coming up. But enough's enough. I mean, I, I could name roads that have been five, six years. We, we've told that we're going to be doing something ditched, resurfaced. Can we move on, please?
Yeah, I, I am trying to, and I, I, if I don't, if you don't mind, um. Mallory, can you read the full resolution again, and then I'll ask for mover, seconder?
Yep, uh, be it resolved that the committee receive and acknowledge this report regarding public work status updates as information. And further, the, the committee recommends that council direct staff to bring a report to a future meeting. A process for collecting a road repair deposit.
Has been read. Do I have a mover and a seconder for that? Counselor Kennedy and Counselor Smith? All in favor? And that's carried. Okay. Um. So. Snowplow truck. Good thing to talk about in April, that's when the snow's gone. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so thi- this is a report that we've seen before, uh, about once a year. So just asking pre-approval to get moving on a truck that's going to be scheduled for replacement next year. Um, just for reference, the truck that we approved last May, I believe it was, is still not here. We're expecting it in July. So it just highlights the need to stay ahead of this stuff, um, because when you need these trucks, you need them, and there's not a lot of them out there.
Senator Kennedy, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I fully support this. I just want to make sure, Rob, you think three hundred is enough, given the in- increasing costs of, uh. Material that we're seeing here of unprecedented, uh, steel and all that, uh. Uh, um, I, I can't remember what the, what you put in for last year, uh, but I wouldn't even. I'd, I'd support if you went to three twenty-five even as an example, just for next year's consideration.
Just such. Yeah, this is more for information. Uh, I think the one we're expecting came in around two eighty-five, two eighty-six. Um, I was talking with the, uh, the suppliers, and there's a small increase. Um, the three hundreds just for, for information. If we go to tender, we'll know what exactly what we're into for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Now, good, good point.
Um, what, what else I can follow up on is, uh. The, uh, there's such a shortage of these trucks right now. Uh, I spoke with one or, one of our dealers, and he can't even get a, a dump truck. A basic dump truck until September, and that was last month when I talked to him. So i- it's very important to stay ahead of it, and the older pieces of, uh, of equipment. Are going for a very, very, very high dollar right now. So, um, as soon as we can get one into auction, we're going to do it. And see what we can, uh, get back out of it.
That, that's good to know. So the, the upside is the, the, uh, low estimate on the sale of the old truck could be, could be low. But for now, it's just, uh, to, to get that tender out now, which, like we say, we've got to, got to do that, uh, mover, seconder then for that. Counselor Clark, second to Counselor McKechnie? It resulted that the committee recommend that council direct staff to release a request for tender for one tandem axle truck with snowplow equipment. And that the delivery of truck shall be scheduled for twenty twenty-two, and that the purchase of the truck be included in the twenty twenty-two municipal budget. All in favor? Okay, that carries. Um, just to note too, remember we made a recommendation that we had forward-facing cameras each time we ordered a new truck. So this will be in, a forward-facing camera will be included in that tender.
Uh, yeah, yes, it was noted in there, yes.
Yeah, okay, sorry, I didn't even. Yeah. Oh, oh, it's right there. I'm just keeping an eye on the time. I did have a, a request for a break, but, uh, we have a lot to cover in public works. I'm just wondering if everyone can wait at least another, uh, ten, fifteen minutes. I don't think we're going to be able to get through absolutely everything in public works, because it's very full agenda right now, but if it's okay, we will go through the next item. Everybody's okay? Yeah, okay. Um, a speed radar sign location.
Yeah, so this is following up on, uh. Uh, council's approval to order four speed radar signs, uh, with additional hardware to accommodate twelve different sites throughout the municipality. Um, I'm expecting the signs will hopefully be here next week. Um, so once we get this hammered out, we can get some crews to install each location, and as soon as they're here, we'll start rolling them out. Um, we'll see how the timing works, but it'd be nice to roll them out in two-week increments, um, and just keep them going all summer long. Um, you'll see in the report, I, I highlighted the, the six roads that I could recall we had complaints or issues on. If I've missed one, two, or more, I do apologize. Um. Uh, but these are the ones that really jumped out at me for council's information, and we just seek, uh, clarification and direction on where to, to place the signs for this season.
So, um, uh, the resolution basically is, is blank to fill in all twelve. So I'm going to kick it off by saying we include the sixth that Rob has included, and then I'll open it up to the floor. For an additional, the, for instance, there's none there that we would actually take out. Anyone want to take out one of those roads? I don't think so. So those locations, and then we'd be looking for an additional six locations as per counselors, uh. You know, just knowledge of complaints or areas of your work, so we'll open it up. Counselor Smith and Counselor Clark?
Uh, thank you, and, uh, thanks, Rob. I think the, the list you started with is a, is a good one. Um, I would, uh, I, I would add Wilkinson Road. Uh, you'll recall, or you may recall, uh. Correspondent to a year or so back, the, the owner on Wilkinson Road that recommended that we employ the, uh. I think it was called in. The, as a speed bump to, uh, slow traffic along that, there's a quite a straight stretch of Wilkinson Road, uh, in the upper area. Uh, that's problematic, and, uh, and so I think, uh, you know, it's something like that is an area that would benefit from, uh, from one of these signs.
Okay.
And, uh, I'd, I'd also with respect to Irish Line here on the list. Um, you know, one of the problems with Irish Line is that we have it posted at sixty kilometers an hour. If we could change that sign to fifty. Um, that combined with the, uh, I know the flashing are, uh, would be, uh. I think, uh, an excellent, uh, vehicle to, uh, uh, help address the problem on Irish Line.
Rob wanted to answer that, and then I'll, uh, there was another counselor, so.
Uh, just something I should have added on the outset. Um. I, in the report, uh, I do, I do ask for specific locations if needed. So just for counter, the committee's, uh, clarification, my intent, for instance, if Irish Line is on the, the list. We're going to put the sign at or about where the counters were, so we can get kind of, uh, you know, similar data. We got a good baseline already, so. That's what I would recommend is start there, and if you want to move them around after, afterwards, that's fine. Um, but I would recommend putting the speed signs up where we had the traffic counters last year.
And so to Counselor Smith's recommendation of Wilkinson, uh, without, have you using the nine-one-one? You know where that location is? Straight stretch? I don't.
Yes, we have coordinates on, uh, on where the other counters were.
Okay.
Um, so what I could do is I, I could send something out, uh, a map or, uh, a table of some sort to give the committee an idea where they're going.
Great. Um, what about Counselor Smith's recommendation for Irish Lines changed to fifty?
Uh, that opens up a great conversation about speed limits that I, I think we will be discussing later on.
Exactly. So just, but I had to, would talk about that later. Um. But that definitely could, either way, be a location, and I did, I apologize. There was another counselor after.
Sorry, just, uh, one other, uh, sample here. Rob, I'm not sure that it's a flashing sign, but. You'll know from last year Coleman Lake Bridge, the new bridge there. Um, the local residents have always been concerned about speed, uh, in the area of the bridge. Um, the temporary bridge did a great job of slowing traffic down. Uh, the contractor who worked on that bridge had a different technique, just suggesting a, essentially a seasonal speed bump. Um, and, and you, uh, didn't think that was, uh, appropriate or effective, uh, but, uh. Uh, maybe Coleman Lake, uh, maybe the bridge at Coleman Lake is another spot for, uh, of, a sign. Something, uh, to demonstrate that, uh, we are trying to slow traffic down in the area of that bridge, a lot of trucks.
Okay, so we'll probably end up having to whittle it down. Irish Line was already included in the thing, but you've got Wilkinson and Coleman. Uh, I, I, like I said, I apologize, there wasn't counselor after Counselor Smith. Was it Counselor McKechnie? It's Counselor, okay, and then Counselor Clark?
Yeah, uh, I would like us to look at twenty-one on Sir Sam's Road. And also, um, at least one or two more fifty, uh, kilometers, uh, signs up along there. Please.
Okay, we'll talk about signage later, but just for now, for the radars for Sam's Road, that was definitely on my list. Uh, Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I've, I've got three for, um, Rob to consider, and, and I'll be looking for his input, but at least to, to kind of take a look at some of the stats. Uh, Fred Jones, uh, Kenaway, and First Dale are all three very major roads in my area, my ward. We'll see that in, in the, uh, the Dudley section, but, uh, they're, they're, they're fairly major, um, run, or through ways.
I didn't catch the third one?
Um, Trappers.
Trappers?
Fred Jones, Kenaway, and Trappers.
So when you, so Loon Lake Road, that's. Where's that specifically when you say Loon Lake Road, Rob?
No, 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 Fred Jones, but I didn't have.
Yeah, no, but Loon Lake Road, is that the one to the?
The top of the Trappers Trail.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, okay.
Right there.
Yeah.
So I think one of the things we need to consider, uh, when we're, when we're talking about putting these up is, is, um. Hey, if someone wants to, in my mind, drive quickly on the Kenaway. There's very few driveways there. There's very few people walking and cycling. Part of the purpose of having people be cognizant of the speed that they are going. Is because we want people to be able to feel that they can cycle and walk safely on our roads and sort of share that road. So the Kenaway, to me, is not an area where, um. Where there is, uh, high. Foot traffic, whereas something like Sir Sam's Road is continually, that, like, everybody walks that road. So I think we, we don't want to put them in areas, sure, maybe someone's going too fast, but hey, if it's washboard, you know, you're going to end up with, uh. Some alignment problems in your vehicle. You, I think the road itself will slow you down, so that's, uh, just a thought on the Kenaway. Uh, Fred Jones does get these, so I think we should look, where are there areas? Something like Wigmuck, or which we already have identified to do, where people walk that road all the time, Wigmuck Road and Wonderland and, and that type of thing. So, um.
Just trying to be proactive on some of our bigger, higher-traffic roads. Just trying to be proactive on some of our bigger, higher traffic roads is all I'm doing.
And I don't, I don't know that Kenaway.
Yeah.
Would call, qualify for that. I, I want to hear also from uh, Counselor Donaldson because I don't know the roads as well and more.
Uh, yeah, uh, like I think it was previously, the main roads are county roads in Harcourt. And so I, I've not heard anything um, speed wise or, I mean, Benore Lake just got done, so I think all is good. I haven't heard anything.
No, you got construction uh, on the county coming up, County Road Ten and up that way. So you'll, you know, but, but again, there's not driveway after driveway. It's not a, I mean, there might be some really good road cyclists out there and there may be a few people walking, but it's not, I think we're really just trying to slow it down on places like uh, a Wilkinson makes sense where there's a lot of people that uh, that walk and cycle those roads. Um, we are know the Calvert and Lake Road is had requests. Uh, Counselor Wood Roberts, is there anything particularly in Ward one that you can think of? Yep.
I just wonder, well, I just wonder if we could have one that we could kind of move around here and there over the space of a couple of weeks. There's a lot of the streets that are very, very busy that don't have sidewalks. You know?
Yeah, I think they do have to get.
In town limit's supposed to be that much slower. People aren't really aware.
Yeah, they will get mounted, so I think.
Their speed.
Wanted, ne- next year, we could do some more mounts or something like that if we feel they're working. Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
I suspect after the discussion we're having here that we should probably leave some open spaces because the public is sure going to uh, pipe in as if they listen to this today about speeding issues. Uh, I don't want to reserve all twelve spots today because I'm sure we're going to hear from some people. So uh, maybe we should just, if we're happy with this, let's not start grabbing at straws to fill the, fill the slate.
Is an excellent suggestion. Yeah, um, Mallory.
We've already filled all twelve, so after.
If, if, if we have, I'm gonna, I've got them written down and I was going to go back over them. So I was going to um, personally, I was going to bump Kenaway only because as, as per, like, I don't think a lot of people are cycling and walking on there and, you know, I, I, that's the purpose is to make our roads safe. That's where we've had the complaints is someone on Halbert and Lake Road. They want to be able to walk out their cottage road and, and be able to walk and cycle on those roads. Uh, they don't want to have accidents, et cetera. There's more higher traffic. So um, let's go back to Wilkinson. Is everyone happy with keeping Wilkinson in? Okay, um, Coleman Lake Bridge. I don't know if that's I like Deputy Mayor Kennedy's idea of keeping a few open. Uh, Tamara?
Uh, one spot in town when you're considering where people walk a lot to, like Pine Street might be somewhere to consider, somewhere narrow roads, no sidewalks.
Yep, somewhere along Pine from the harbor into on there. Okay, so was it, was, was people, were people thinking and, and Counselor Smith, to my point of, of how many people are walking, et cetera, is, is Coleman Lake Bridge, is that one that we can hold off on so that we can keep a few blanks, not fill in all twelve?
I'd uh, I, I'm not sure that the flashing radar is the right answer for Coleman Lake. There's other, other techniques there. The other thing I, I'd point out uh, uh, for counselors to keep in mind is that uh, you know, uh, I'll use Green Lake Road as an example. There could be two locations because you've got high volumes of traffic going in both directions. And um, and so uh, if you only have one location on Green Lake Road, it, it either gets the people coming in uh, that just left Highway one eighteen or it gets the people that have turned off, it's just Lake Road and are heading out Highway one eighteen. Um, and um, and the other thing from an information source point of view uh, is as, as Rob knows, and, and I'm sure he used this for some of his own guidance. He has uh, uh, traffic counts and speed indications from the work that was done last summer. So uh, you know, on Kinesis Lake Road, for example, the first spot that he installed as you're going out uh, wasn't a problem. People, the eighty-five percent of the traffic was within the speed limit. But the second location uh, on Kinesis Lake Road for his uh, his radar showed people eighty-five percent were going well over the speed limit. And um, and that's data beyond uh, you know, emails of complaint. Green Lake Road was the same, both direction. Over eighty-five percent of the traffic, eight, sorry, eighty-five percent of the traffic was doing more than nine kilometers over the speed limit. That's, that says is a problem there on a, on a road that's posted forty.
Hmm. And that's you. So, well, uh, so we had Wilkinson, Sir Sam's and, and Pine Street. Can we include those three? Is everyone fair to include those three? Which then leaves a gap of three more to be determined. Um, I know, Rob, you're, okay, Mallory, go ahead.
There was also Fred Jones Road and Trappers Trail. And then there was Kenaway, but you're, you're suggesting we take it off?
Yeah, well, I am, but I don't know if any, if Larry's okay with that. And the rest of count is a council decision, not just uh, people are throwing out ideas. We're trying to, it's, it's a, it's a hard little ball of juggle. Um, that's right. Then that doesn't leave any spaces. Is, is Trappers Trail?
I, I'm, I'm sorry to uh, throw in another one up in my ward, but especially near the park uh, there uh, on Hodgson in, in, for future consideration.
Right.
Thank you.
Rob, how difficult it is, is it to do these mounts and have the, you know, you talk about having them move around?
Uh, well, the intent was to uh, mount six by six posts with the hardware on it. So it would just tie up one person to put a sign up and turn the key kind of thing. Um, say, we, we're not flush with staff, so the less we have to move them, the better.
Hmm. Have we ever, have we had complaints around the public beach there on that road? Or do people?
Yeah, ye- yes.
So then that might fill up all six bases. Trying to find some consensus here. Uh, Mallory, do you want to read back if we did include the Hudson near the park, the beach?
Sure. So there's, so these are the ones we've added. Wilkinson, Sir Sam's Road, Fred Jones, Trappers Trail, Pine Street and Hodgson Drive.
And that's six.
Yes, and that will just fill up the list. So we have.
It's okay with doing that. It means that we aren't leaving any spaces. It's not to say that uh, this time next year that we can put some more mounts and see how it goes. Is everybody okay with those six then and not leaving blanks? Yeah, okay. I see a lot of nods. Awesome. Um, so I'm going to read the resolution. And we've included the roads that are there and the clerk just read the other six roads, so I'm not going to read it each road. If that's okay for council. Uh, I do need a mover and a second gear. Uh, Counselor Smith, Counselor McKechnie. It resolved the committee to hold, acknowledge and receive this report concerning the twenty twenty-one speed radar program as information and that the committee recommend the following road be monitored in twenty twenty-one as part of the speed radar program and the roads have all been mentioned. All in favor? Okay, that carries. We have been at it for an hour and thirty-five minutes and I did have a request for a break. So I'm going to suggest we take a fifteen minute recess. Uh, sorry, uh, Rob, John, and I don't know Jeff, if you're in on any of the further ones or Jeff needs to come back in, but you guys can decide that. And um, so fifteen minute recess brings it up to uh, ten thirty-five. Ten fifty. We'll reconvene. And counselors, you can just turn your screens off and mute. Thank you.
Uh, which is runs between Park and Victoria. There is quite a deep culvert in that uh, under that road and that culvert would need to be replaced, which would put that uh, that project over budget before we even touch the surface. But that work could be done in conjunction with the additional works along Pine Avenue uh, in conjunction with the twenty twenty drainage study we had done last year. So I would recommend that that one get pulled out.
Okay.
So mov- moving forward, um, say that this is what was proposed in non-specific roads. I would ask for direction from council if they want to add anything or take anything away um, that they see fit. Um, that if we could get that hammered out today, that would make our life much easier. We can get rolling with these projects.
Okay, and when, and, and just uh, before I turn it over to counselors, just when you say add things or take things away, I think we have to be really careful to remember that we invested in a DOT software system and we created a level of service or, or set a bar, set a level of service. So when, when we take a road out or like my own road, Halviom, we have to take it out with a, a reason there. We were investigating the extension of a sewer system at some point. So just caution, adding roads or taking roads out, the system is doing what it, we asked it to do, to making it non-political. So it should be, if you're taking a road out, we're asking for a road to be put in. It needs to be made on some merit, not just because we had a complaint. That said, I will turn it over to Counselor McKechnie.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say to Rob, thanks for all the work that you're going to be doing in Ward five. But I've got some great concerns and I've been talking about this for a long time and I'm not going to go on in a lo- at great length about it. Because you've heard me not talk enough about Dunn and Klondike. And um, I, I just, I, I just think that these, these people have been told for years that the road's going to be uh, resurfaced. It, it hasn't been. And if we go by DOT's requirements, it looks like it never will be. And I think that's really, really wrong. I understand we invested in DOT. But I think council should be able to make some decisions here. I know it's my ward, but we're all going to have wards, I mean, roads that are in our ward that um, that we could talk about. But I mean, I, and I've also got um, Bowen where the uh, uh, traffic count never really got a true traffic count because it was set up in the wrong place. I go on about that one. But to me, um, the people on Dunn and Klondike have been extremely patient. And I think it's time for us to address it. And uh, it, it was um, a, a surface road years ago. And Dunn gets an extremely amount of uh, traffic with all the contracting that's going on, construction going on up in Halbert and the Percy Lake area, between contractors and uh, um, trucks going by. So I, I, I just, I think it's time that, that we, that we address those two roads. And I see so many roads here in this new uh, four hundred fifty thousand dollars spend. Uh, I'm, you know, I've been around Halbert and for a long time. I'm not trying to select those roads. But most of them, I don't even know where they are. So I know we're done in Klondike is, and I'm just letting you know, Andrea, um, y- you'll be hearing from the people there. We, we need to get them done. So I appreciate that. Appreciate council uh, um, you know, thinking about this.
Okay, I want to hear from Rob first and then I, go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, and yes, we have invested a lot of time and some money into this software, but what we've said from day one is there's always the human element to this. So as a council, if they want to do roads one through ten, we can do that, but it need, it needs to be told to do that. And for it to be told to do that, I need clear direction. So if, if we need, if council decides they want to do roads, you know, A through D, we, we can do that. We can plug it back in and it, it will fill in the dots where it can. Um, but again, this, the software doesn't necessarily understand that we want to reestablish a level of service that once existed. We have to tell it when to do that. And we just, we haven't decided when we're doing that yet.
In, in that, Rob, that's exactly the thing uh, that I was mentioning earlier in the other report, just to think your, just regular uh, road report. Was that we really, yes, we've talked around a lot about it, but we have not set exactly in resolution which roads that we are going to turn back. So I do not recall ever giving anybody a promise on any road. Myself personally, if the council has given a promise that a certain road was going to be turned back to surface treatment, I, I that's an individual promise. I don't believe we've made any promise to anybody. We, everything would be considered. If that's where we need to have a actual hard and fast resolution, listing the roads that can get plugged back in the system. Go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, and, and to flip the coin on you a, a little bit here, um, we've, we've had this discussion twice that I can recall, not in depth, but uh, it's been brought up. We, we've dealt with, we're dealing with the roads or we're trying to deal with the roads that were once surface treated that have been turned to gravel. Um, I'm looking at the first road in, in Schedule A for this additional work of, of Bernie's Road. So th- there's the other side is now there's a, it's a low volume, short road that's getting pulverized and rehabilitated with a hard surface. So that's the other discussion we need to have too, is not to pick on Bernie's Road. It happened to be the first in the list. But does it warrant hardtop? You know, may, maybe it should be, should be gravel and some of these other roads should be hardtop. But again, we're, we're talking reestablishing an old level of service. And I, I know this Bernie Road and probably others in this list are going to garner conversation as they should. Um, we can't be just picking on the, the roads that were hardtop and turned back to gravel. We got to look at the other ones too, the ones that probably should be gravel.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to comment. First of all, and Andrea, I, I don't make any promises. I just, I, I, I tell, you can ask Rob. I, I tell my constituents what um, what I'm told by him to tell them. And I, I have been told, I'm not trying to put Rob on the spot, but I'm, I'm sure that he, he wishes Dunn and Klondike were resurfaced. But unfortunately, it didn't happen. But I was informed to tell them that hopefully next year it's going to get done. And um, and the other one is um, like Bernie's place, uh, it, it's not very long. Like you say, I'm not trying to put it down, but I mean, if it got resurfaced before Dunn and Klondike, I'm sure I'm going to have a tremendous uproar in my, my ward about it. Because they've been waiting five, six years on Dunn and Klondike. And, and Bowen up there, it's the same. So um, it's definitely a problem and uh, I'm not going to take up a lot more of your time. You know where, how I feel about this. I definitely can't uh, um, honor this new proposal here of roads for sure without they're not even, my, my, these roads aren't even mentioned, which totally blows my mind. But I guess that's DOT. But uh, uh, I think, I think council should make s- some decisions over our software sometimes, common sense ones. Thank you.
Okay, Mallory?
I just have a logistical question for Rob. If council suggests additional roads, um, in addition to what DOT has proposed, but it wants those roads in the software. Can the software then suggest roads underneath it within the budget constraints that you give? So you just add, I want these roads done and then give me the other roads afterwards. I assume. Okay, that was my question. So if you would need to return your meeting, obviously with the new list of what can be done after we've added roads.
Yeah, it's not a deal breaker.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Uh, maybe a little bit off topic. Does, would this include ditching? I'm just looking at that, the pot of money that we have and that where the priority should go. Um, if we were to allocate the top three roads that were gravel, that are gravel that we want to re- rehabilitate back, it, would that ditching in those roads be included in this list or is that a totally separate file altogether?
It would be separate. The only, the full depth reclamation and double surface treatment, that includes ditching with our forces. Nothing else does.
Okay.
So that, that's the one we cap at about ten kilometers a year.
And, and Rob, what you're saying is without proper clear direction from council, which I mentioned before on out of the list of roads that were surface treated, let's just deal with those ones, were surface treated, are now currently gravel. We need to have it in a resolution, listing those specific road names. And you do not have that currently.
That's correct. And I think that goes back to what Counselor Smith was uh, talking about initially when that first report came. I don't know when it was, October, November, December. Um, a previous meeting of all the roads that we had turned back to gravel. It's about thirty kilometers, give or take.
So is that something that you could bring back? Sorry, I see you, Counselor Smith. I'll just finish up my point. Is that something that you could bring back to the next council meeting? Bring that report back so that council could have a resolution and determine with traffic counts and terrain as well. Uh, where, and so you have clear direction and then those roads get put into the system because we did have this conversation as an example of Redken where if it was coming up to be uh, uh, the work Counselor Smith had done a little bit of a financial scenario, the work that it takes to add more gravel or grade the gravel or anything else. Where's the cost benefit if you know that we're going to be turning that down or putting that back to a surface treated road? So um, So I think we need to have that once and for all into a resolution to say, these roads, get them into the DOT system so that they don't come up and we do fresh loads of gravel on it and, and all of that. That makes sense? That makes sense to counselors that we really have, we've talked around a lot about it, but I do not feel, and Rob knows, like we do not have a resolution stating A, B, and C road. And it will be a whole council discussion, maybe as we, you know, all seven of us, maybe Klondike doesn't make the cut. I do not have a traffic count in front of me, but something else does. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I agree to, Adam Mayor, we need to look at the roads. And what we, like, it'd be nice to have is some, some supporting stats from, from Rob's material as well in terms of just how big a dollar figure it is, what the, what the information is like. If we got speeding issues, why are we resurfacing some of these places? We should let them go back. But anyway, we need to start with a bit of a list and then we can kind of work through what's, you know, what, what shouldn't be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McKechnie and then Counselor Smith.
Yeah, I just like to say, and like that small portion on Redken. I'm sure all the other counselors and staff are all tired of talking about it, but that's definitely an area that, you know, we should just fix it. It's surfaced right up to in the last kilometer or so, isn't, you know, these aren't big issues. They're not going to go away. People are starting like you're talking about petitions. In my, I didn't even get into the petitions people are thinking about sending in. I know that they're, they're very concerned. They, they've been waiting a long time. So Redken's another one, another issue on the radar that will never meet DOT's approval, which I don't agree with. So, thank you for your time.
We, we do make that decision of specifically giving Rob direction to what roads are going to be returned to a surface treated road. We have to base it on, on traffic count, terrain, et cetera. So there, we have to base it, not just because people want it a certain way. You know, we have to have some justification for that. Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
I think Counselor Smith was first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me. Sorry, I was a little like, I've got a headache today. I apologize. I'm not feeling great.
I'm sorry you don't feel great. And, and by the way, you'd eventually hear from me anyway, so. Yeah, a great discussion. And, and there are, you know, lots of roads that, you know, individually we should make a case for. I thought, and, and maybe there's not a resolution, but I thought it was pretty clear direction from council this past winter that roads which had formerly been hardtop had been, had been converted to gravel, that where the daily traffic count was in excess of 100, we wanted to get those back to a hardtop. And, and there were eight or nine roads that fall into that category. Some of them require a lot of ditching work. Some of them don't require much ditching work. But, you know, as I said, there may not have been a resolution. There was pretty clear direction in that regard. And I hear from constituents who watch our council meetings, who follow our council meetings very carefully. And, you know, it's not any individual counselor making a commitment. They view that as, oh, good, councils made that decision. And, and roads like that stretch of Redken, roads like the bottom end of Kinesis from Patty's Bay down to the dam, roads like Irish Line. And there were three or four others that fall into that category. And, and, you know, and again, wasn't a resolution, but there was a firm decision by council. That's what we want to get to, want to get those roads done. But I'd like to go back, Rob, to the, you know, to the list. And I'm not, I'd like to advocate for individual roads and like I will, but I'm more puzzled by the, the output of, of the DOT software. You know, I know software pretty well and there's a variety of parameters that you put in that influence the output from the soft terms of the decisions, the selections that it makes. And, and what I find puzzling about our situation here is that the criteria has never changed. I understood it's always been, we want to get our average performance at that 65 level or higher across all of our roads. And you produced the list, the first set of lists, I'm going to say it was back in January, but you know, the first set, you had 2021 and 2022. These are the roads I want to get done in 2021. These roads I want to get done in 2022. And, and that was driven by DOT. Then you, you got some tender results and well, this is more expensive and thought it was going to be changed. Now we're adding more roads here. And it's, it's hard for those that, that look at the detail, these things to say, okay, wait a second. There were a bunch of roads that were originally in 2021. And some of them are now on this final list, some in the tender that's been awarded to, to Miller. Some, you know, are on this incremental list, but some of the 2021 roads are not there now. And yet you've now taken some roads that weren't in, that were in 2022. They're now in 2021. And there's some other roads that aren't on either list. They weren't on the 2021 or the 22 list. But they're now on the list that we're going to do. And it's hard for, for me or any observer who looks at this to say, well, how does that happen? What's, what's the mystery element that's no DOT's not a random road generator. It's, it's based on certain parameters that's causing these things to happen. And, and so how does a road? I'll, you know, some of the ones that run off West Shore, for example, haven't been done in 20 years. They were on your 2021 list. And they're not now on the list of ones you want to do. And yet there are roads on your list that were never on the 2021 or 2020 list. Why does that happen?
Rob?
First, I need to be clear, this isn't roads I want to do. This is not my list. This is roads that were generated using criteria from council. I'm not a software engineer. I'm a lot of things. I'm not a software engineer. If we want to get the engineers in here for a presentation, I'm more than happy to do that. What I do know is we've told the software, we want to keep a network condition of 65 based on a budget. We assign it with X amount of treatments that we use. My treatment costs have changed three times this year. My gravel has doubled. So that, that changes everything that this list does. And to, to back up from the initial list, I could only imagine from the list I presented in November, December, whenever it was. If we had 50 roads on there, we thought we were going to do for one and a half million dollars, but when prices go through the roof 52%. I wasn't going to be the one to cut the roads from that, from that project. Council would have to arbitrarily decide what roads weren't going to, weren't going to get done to fit into that budget. So yeah, in hindsight, that was a mistake for me to present two years and unless I'm directed to, I won't be doing that again. So what I can tell you is I'm a believer in the software, but I'm not a fool either. If we want to take the human element and take some roads out, put some roads in, go for it. I'm here at council's direction to do this. But I can tell you, the software doesn't care what ward these, these roads are in. It's looking at a network performance using the parameters we tell it. As far as the programming, I couldn't tell you. I just know that the materials that we use have changed price three times this year in each scenario that I've run.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you for that, thank you for that response. But it's, it's still puzzling. Our road that wasn't on the list for either 21 or 22 can now be on the list when so many roads that were there for 21 are now not on the list. And there's got to be some explanation for that.
Rob, do you want to answer that? And then Deputy Mayor Kennedy's next.
Just to reiterate, I'm not a software engineer. If council wants me to contact the company, I will gladly do that this afternoon.
Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Yeah, thanks, Rob, for this. This is the first year of the DOT software they're actually using it. So I fully expect there's going to be some expected there would be problems. And I said a year and a half ago, I'd live or die on this sword. And it looks like I'm going to die on it because I am going to endorse the DOT software because it is a network across the whole municipality. But with that, I'd like to do a caveat that we look at because we did make a verbal commitment, if not by resolution, that we were going to return our top roads back to hardtop. That we put that in as a parameter in here, even if you want to bring it back, that roads that are scheduled for maintenance that were, are currently gravel, that were previously hardtop, as soon as there any work at all happens, they move to hardtop. No more gravel. That, that takes the, the political side out of it. So the program is actually going to say, okay, done. It's coming up for gravel. It's now going to be hardtop and it'll be included in your regular 1.5 plus the cost of living. That takes the, away from it. I don't know how else to do it. I mean, I could wind that Wega Mag needs to be a four lane. I, I just don't, I think we're getting so far down the weeds. We're going to take a road out and somebody's going to be mad. Put one in, somebody's going to be mad. So I don't know if there's any solution to this.
Well, you know, all municipalities struggle with that. I've seen our other local municipalities in the counties struggle with their roads situation. And I honestly feel like it's one of those things that we're really, really close. But the missing piece is there is no resolution that determines the actual road names, saying whether it be, I'm not saying it's going to be done, Redken, Bitter, Irish Line. I don't know that yet. I want Rob, if we can, or direct Rob, to all of council, direct Rob, to bring back a report. So those roads, we, we agree on what those roads are that are going to be brought back because not all of them are. And that they then will get plugged into that software. So they'll come up in due course. Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Yeah, and we already have that information. Rob gave us that. So the top five roads are, if we decide, you know, looking at this, this list that he gave us back with, with Counselor Smith was referring to earlier with the, the road list. If we took, for example, Rob presented, say, the top five going forward, these are the top five based on traffic counts going forward, the blah, blah, blah. And then council would say, well, we can't afford to do them all, but let's do the top three. And then, and then that maybe would be where the flexibility comes in. I don't know if that's a reasonable.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, Rob, I know you want to speak to, without having that, that specific report in front of me today. I, I need to see it for council to make those decisions. Rob?
Uh, yeah, and just to wind things up a little bit more. Bear with me. Just connecting the dots in my mind and on the screen here. Going back to what Deputy Mayor Kennedy was saying, if, if any road is due for any type of work and, you know, these 10 roads, 20 roads, whatever there are, they get, they get the hardtop. Well, last year we had hoped to ditch Kinesis Lake Road and Dunn Road. We didn't get to either one of them because we were occupied in other areas. If you look at the Schedule A to the second resurfacing tender, Dunn Road is scheduled for gravel this year. So to me, if you're connecting dots, one, two, and three, we're hoping to ditch it. We're going to gravel it anyways. If I get permission now, I'll resurface it this year. But that's not something I can decide.
Can we make that decision at council in, on April 27? That's what people want to know. That's what we're, that's what we're all getting pressure from. Walt's getting pressure, John's getting pressure. We're all getting it. So is that something that, that would, would you rather we don't pass this resolution today and then we wait to council?
I mean, yeah, I just don't want to miss an opportunity that if you want to reinstate that level of service, that's fine. That's council's discretion. I don't want to lose, lose that opportunity at a next meeting or two meetings or next year, whenever it happens. And Dunn missed out on the opportunity when we were doing two thirds of the work already, or hopefully two thirds of the work already.
And needed to wait.
I could cost it out if you like.
Yeah, Counselor Smith?
I, I think that costing it out, you know, I think it was Deputy Mayor Kennedy, somebody mentioned, or actually it was Mayor Roberts mentioned the, you know, the, the kind of cost numbers I had thrown out. You had given us some factors. Again, last winter prior to the budget time, where you talked about, you gave us some numbers in terms of cost per trip for you know, spreading dust suppressant, adding gravel, grading gravel roads and so forth. And, and I had taken that and used that special Redken as an example and said, well, Dee, the, the best case here is to get this thing to hardtop. Because the sooner we do that, can't remember exactly what it was, but you know, we're going to save $10,000 a year on, on, you know, gravel, dust suppressant and maintaining a gravel road that frankly, once you get the hardtop down, you don't need to do it anymore. And you've just said here a few minutes ago, that the price of gravel has actually gone up by more than the cost of putting hardtop down, which would make that a business case, if you like, even more robust. And, and so, you know, beyond the DOT software, I'd like to see some financial analysis that, you know, would guide us in terms of, of making some of these decisions because we still have more money in reserves. You know, you, you and Jeff indicated earlier this morning that we've also got probably some money left in our snow budget because the, this past winter was a very soft and gentle one. You didn't have to incur the costs that you would, you might have expected when you, when you built the budget. But we don't know what's going to happen next November or December, but you know, there's a trend with the last couple of years. So I'd like to see us get back to, to looking at not just what comes out of DOT software, but some of these other, you know, strategic considerations around restoring the service that people once had with a hardtop road. We took, turned it into gravel. I'm not allowed to say that that was the past council's stated state. It was, it was an error in judgment and that led to that result. And, and we want to get those back to a hardtop. And in some cases, Kinesis Lake Road, your report told us, there's a lot of work that needs to be done for a ditching. You've told me two years in a row as a counselor for that area, that you need to get the ditching work done. You're going to get it done. And I believe you, you're very credible, Rob. But unfortunately conflicting priorities come up and it doesn't get done. These things need to get addressed and we need to have a sense, whether it's contracting out the ditching or, you know, a higher degree of confidence that the work will get done so that we can get that hardtop down on that surface, on that surface boat in 2022. Some of the others don't need as much work. So maybe Redken is one that could get done in 2021. Again, there's a, there's a cost benefit case that you could, you could bring back. And, and, you know, and then others, I mean, I, I look, I didn't even ask you because I would be embarrassed, but you know, you're on your, on your list that came out of DOT this month, this additional items. You've got Boomerang down there. Well, in the previous report, Boomerang was two stretches. There's, there's two places where Boomerang runs from Winkler to West Shore. A Boomerang, oh, I got his name. I don't know what's, you're only proposing to do one stretch, but it's hard to imagine you come out and do the hardtopping on a short road like Boomerang and you're only going to do half of it in 2021. Maybe there's an explanation for that. I don't know.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Rob and I really want to try to find some kind of resolution that we can you know, kind of get, get somewhere with this. I feel, so Rob, go ahead, please.
Again, to be clear, it's, you know, it's not, I want to do a section of Boomerang or I want to do a section of Winkler. And as I said from the outset, I did not add anything to the list. I did not take anything away from the list. It's a computer program. It doesn't have the human touch. If we want to sit down and map everything out, we can do that. That's why we're having this discussion. I didn't want to skew anything by adding anything, taking anything away because I'm taking my opinion out of it largely because we are relying on the software. But yes, there is a human touch to it that we need. I didn't tweak the data for a reason. I wanted you to see what it was spitting out.
Okay, so.
If I could just respond to that. Then let's take the, the data that spun out. Let's bring that human touch to it in terms of your expertise, Rob, and Jeff's expertise. And some of the discussion we've had today and bring back a list that we can work with and finalize at the council meeting in two weeks. Even if it involves spending a little more than $465,000 because we have that capability.
So that's where I'm trying to get at Counselor Smith today is bother, I, I, I know, do we pass this resolution or let it sit for now? Give staff more direction to come back, include those roads that we did verbally talk about gravel. I see Nancy, Counselor Wood Roberts, I'll be right there. So that, and then we make the decision in two weeks.
I just feel that.
I I just feel that I I feel that Rob's trying to defend himself against all the direction he's been given. And because every time he brings back information, we change what we want. So I think, one, he needs very clear direction. If we're going to base our our choices or decisions on the dot software, trust the software. Word one has still never had any traffic counts or speed or anything like that done. I just think we're just going around in circles for the last forty minutes, talking about the same thing. So clear direction and he can bring back numbers and the information provided out of the dot software.
Yeah, and I do agree, Counselor Wood Roberts, it clear direction, but I think the the thing that has been missing, and it's our responsibility, not Rob's, to make sure that he has that, is that we have discussed roads that were hard topped, taken to gravel that we want to bring back. They need to get plugged into the system as per council's direction, not just like an actual resolution that lists. These are the five roads, plug them into the system, see what happens. They're not in the system. We talked around and so that he, yes, this has spit out this report. And as Counselor Smith says, we can, we can spend more in twenty twenty one if we so choose and take money out of reserves. We have that ability. So I I I think this is my my thought would be to hold off on passing this resolution. There seems to be a little bit too much contention and give staff direction to come back with that report that we did see previously on the on those gravel roads with the traffic counts. Some of them are going to make the cut and some of them are not. And so then it may skew things because I I don't know where to go with this after forty five minutes of conversation either. Uh, Rob?
And maybe this isn't, I don't know if I should say this or not, but my recommendation would be now is if you you defeat the resolution as is and go back to the drawing board for the next meeting with different direction. Because that list is going to get modified one way or the other. So it can't be, it can't be passed as presented.
No, I was going to defer it. I was gonna, that was my suggestion was to defer. Mallory?
You can, you can receive the report, but then you can direct that staff bring back a report to council with the with the following roads added to the dot software for twenty twenty one resurfacing. And we can list roads.
Yes, we could list them today, but my problem is unless someone wants to prime off the list, I don't have that report back to that gravel, that report that came back so many months ago. If if somebody has that in front of them, I recall that that's what I need to see. I don't know in, according to our criteria, if Klondike makes the cut, is it ADT of fifty nine? But Redkin was a hundred and fifty nine that I so.
Okay, we can just receive the report then.
Receive the report and and give staff direction to bring that report, that the report that I'm speaking of, Rob, you know, when I'm talking about the gravel to resurfacing roads. And we can go from there. Counselor Smith, McEckney, pardon me, and then Counselor Smith.
Thank you. I I think, you know, like the roads I'm talking about, Dunn and Klondike and Bowden, they're they're what what times of the day or year are you talking like? I know Klondike has a hundred traffic count there and probably June, July, and August, number of boats are going in. And that's a public boat boat launch there. And Dunn is, there's a lot more traffic than we realize. I mean, the day or the week that that traffic counter was up there, that's where we're going on. Dunn was surfaced at one time, so was Klondike, so was Bowden. I I just think that, you know, unfortunately, we're we're dealing with roads that that were in in the past and that are that have been back to gravel for a long time. And I and I just think it's time that we we address those those issues today and Redkin also. And then get get to the next list. Thank you.
Counselor McEckney, when I was saying that, I that's why I'm saying I'm talking off the top of my head. I don't have, I want that report in front of me so I can be part of the decision making and and all council can make that decision. I cannot recall exactly. I just picked a number out of because then two, I don't know.
Oh, I I don't like the what the the traffic count is going to say about those roads. I think there's more traffic than 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 you realize and, but.
Well, we have that discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Meeting, I'm I'm thinking now, Counselor Smith, did you have anything to add? What I what my suggestion is after, I'll just say is that we received this report and that we give staff direction to bring back the name of the report that I'm talking about. I'm going to ask the clerk to help me with a detailed resolution. So this resolution, as it sits right now, will change, but we're at least receiving this report. Bring back to at council in two weeks. So Counselor Smith, you had something to add to that?
I I would be, I'd be good with that if I'd ask Rob if there's any other information or guidance that he needs today. You know, your Madam Mayor, your your recollection of Redken, I think it was just a guess you made. But you said a hundred fifty nine, it's actually a hundred and sixty nine is the average daily traffic count on on Redken. You know, Irish Line is a hundred and seventy nine. Kinesis Lake Road is a hundred and fifty five, all in those areas that are for were formerly hard topped and converted back to gravel. But it's not just about the average daily traffic because Rob will tell us that, you know, Irish Line, you can't do a surface treatment of that road right now. There's a tremendous amount of work needs to be done building up the base before it would make any sense. And and so I suspect that would impact Rob's, you know, list that he's going to bring forward. But he's got the expertise, the knowledge to put together a list. I I read between the lines of what his comments of Boomerang, he said, yeah, that the dot software to take that short road, divide it in two and do half of it. But that probably doesn't make any sense. If you if you're going to be very, you do half that road. And, you know, so, Rob, what else do you need from us at this point to bring back a list that you would feel confident in is the is the right list? And and knowing as as Mayor Roberts and others have said, the dollars don't need to be limited just to four sixty five. You know, don't come back and tell us you want to spend an extra four and a half million. But, you know, if it came back at six hundred or or something like that, we'd find a way.
Yeah, until I hear the resolutions, I know we've been amending and changing and that kind of thing. Say, right now, I I don't have confidence, as you would say, because I I just don't know what the resolution says. Can we read it?
I don't think anyone knows what the resolution says, including clerk. So I'm going to give you a sentence and I want everyone to tell me it sounds okay. So further that the committee recommends that council direct staff to bring a report to council, including five roads that were previously hard topped and converted to gravel. But I can't put top five roads because what makes a road a top road? So you what you're saying in that resolution without saying it is that you're giving Rob the ability to choose those roads. And I want to know if council's comfortable with that. Because I don't, and then, and I want to know if Rob's comfortable with that direction as well. Because we're not picking roads in this this meeting, so.
No, we can't, and I don't know why, was it five?
Five is what we were talking about. Rob has comment.
Yeah, go ahead, Rob.
I think from from my peace of mind, moving into the next meeting, if I basically take the the format of the report you're referring to, Madam Mayor, which showed every road that we have turned back to gravel. If I can, I threw some budget numbers at it. If I could tighten it up and find some truer costs to bring it back up to a surface treatment. Counselor Smith referred to Irish Line, yeah, it needs some help, there's no doubt about that. So, you know, it's going to be a little more expensive per kilometer than the other ones. But if I bring back the thirty kilometers or give or take whatever it is of roads that we've turned back to gravel, I can assign as as best I can a budget number to those roads. And then council can use its discretion, see how much money they want to spend on which roads.
Does everyone understand that? Yes, Count Deputy Mayor Kennedy and then Counselor Smith.
Was that in addition to the four sixty five we're spending now? This will be a new list to be added to it or?
It it could be added to, it could replace this list, that that could be council's discretion.
I that's my thought was that it would, it would not necessarily replace, but would alter.
Or created into it, okay.
That's plug those roads in if we say, let's just say Irish Line, we are no, Redkin, because there is little work that, and we plug Redkin in for this year. But we are just say we stay at the four sixty five amount. And you plug that in, then other roads will drop off this list. So I'm I'm sorry, Rob, I'm sorry, this is so confusing for counselors and for you, and it's not clear direction. However, I I I truly have, I've said this before, I feel like we're close. But without plugging those roads that we have all talked about, that we would be good candidates to put back to a surface treatment without getting those into the system will be the same place every year will just be banging our heads against the wall until those roads get plugged into that system. That that's the level of service then, you know, and and that that I think that we're just going to be the same, we'll just go around in circles. Sorry, Counselor Smith was next, but Tamara you want to talk to, but Counselor Smith, go ahead and then Tamara.
Well, I I think that we're on the right track here. I'm going to advocate for, you know, keeping the four sixty five for, you know, the the list that Rob's brought home. He he may modify that list a little bit, the one that was created by Dot. I think he suggested he'd like to put a human spin on that on that list. And but keeping it in the in the area of four sixty five that turned it to be four eighty five, you know, will solve that problem. And then in addition to that, I'd like him to look at those roads that haven't been addressed. There are those roads that were formerly a hard top and and council has said we want to get them back to being a hard top. I'd like to see a plan for them. Clearly, it's not going to be all done in twenty twenty one. Because Rob will look at that list and I I use Irish Line, he's confirmed it. Irish Line needs a lot of work. And and that's not a hard top in twenty twenty one, in my opinion. Because it's, there's there's too much work to do before it makes sense to put a hard top on there. But some of the other ones that were in that category of formerly hard top, now gravel, we want to get back to a hard top. They'll say, it doesn't need much work. Redkin's a pretty flat road, it's wide open and it's in pretty good shape. Instead of putting more gravel on it, let's get it hard enough. And I trust Rob's judgment. I I have lots of comments and I always ask lots of questions, I admit that. But in the end, he and Jeff have got a lot of expertise. And and they bring something forward with a supporting rationale. They're probably going to go with it. And and I and so in addition to that, four sixty five or four eighty five, whatever it is for those base roads, you know, tell us what you think it'll cost free to those of the top five or six of the ones that are are formerly hard topped. We want to get back there. Give us a ballpark number and council can decide, yeah, we'll we'll take another three hundred thousand or whatever out of reserves and and get that done in twenty twenty one. And then the others, well, we'll defer some of them to twenty twenty two. We'll get the ditching work done this year so that they're ready to be hard topped next year. That's the sort of plan that I'd like to see him bring forward. And I think he and Jeff have got the capability to bring it forward to in two weeks. We can decide then, thank you.
Okay, Tamara, you want to speak and then I'm going to get Mallory to read that resolution again and we'll see if we can go from there.
Yeah, I just basically wanted to clarify the direction with Rob that, so basically you're going to go take, go back and input all of the pre, all of the data on the gravel roads into it and come back with a brand new report based on what it feeds out, based on that.
No, it won't be put into the program, it'll be done by hand, basically take a closer look at each road.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Kennedy and Mallory?
I hate to keep around, so on the sort of the final version of the primary draft two, the primary roads, not supplementary, looking at today. For example, Dunn is in here to get gravelled again. So you're going to bring back the thing that says that Dunn is now going to be hard topped, is that correct? Okay. Because there's six roads in that first list that are previously surface treated. But I don't know if all of them need to go back to surface treatment. I think I'm your, that's been your comment as well, that we look at some of these roads and say, okay, council says they want everything that was previously surface treated back. But my recommendation is is that Road C doesn't have the traffic volume to warrant it and keep it that way. And that's the kind of recommendation I'd like to see coming forward, rather than just a blanket statement that every every road that was that was previously surface treated become surface treated again, because as said here, it may not be worth the money to to do it.
No, and that was, that was, I don't think ever the direction of council. Where, you know, and in fact, that.
Better Burdock, which is the number one road, if you go by traffic council.
Mallory, are you able to?
You guys are funny. You just said that that's not the direction, but I thought that's what Rob was proposing, so.
Every road, like road that has a traffic count of ten? No.
I I think you do every road. If we're going to go through this exercise, I think you want to look at every road.
Okay, well then.
Because it is, it's council's discretion if they if they want to, if you as a group want to bring every road that was pulverized back to a a surface treatment. That that's say, that's your decision, but if I don't bring that information forward, you don't have the information to make that decision.
So I do, and Counselor Smith talked about it earlier, so somewhere along the lines, however, not in resolution, we had a conversation where we benchmark it at a hundred. That then we weren't going to consider anything that was less than one hundred.
I I will, I will include the the seven different gravel classes that we discussed last fall. Just for reference.
Okay, Counselor Smith?
Yeah, just, you know, we did talk about those roads that were hard topped, went to gravel, get them back to hard top, prioritizing those that have a traffic count over one hundred.
Yeah.
But I don't think I and and I certainly number of other counselors and Counselor McEckney's made it clear today. Whatever the traffic count was, if it was once a hard top, we ought to get it back to a hard top or keep it at a hard top. We can't say to people, just because you're at the end of a road and we put a counter there and there's only six houses, you know, because all of our roads ended at dead end. Does that say everybody at the end of a road ends up with a gravel stretch? Because at the end of the road, the traffic count's always small. Those people are paying the same taxes as the people that are further up the road and 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 they deserve to be able to go out of their driveway. Some of those driveways, I mean, I got a lot of of high property owners, they've got asphalt in their driveway for God's sakes, and they pull onto a gravel road. Doesn't make any sense.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's like Counselor Clark said earlier, there's there's some people that are very satisfied with their gravel road. So anyway, if that's that's, I I, like I say, I'm I'm suffering from a headache today, so it's making me hard state hot, making it challenging for me to stay focused. So Mallory, if you can read something for me.
So I'll just, I'll I'll read what I have right now. Be it resolved that the committee received the report regarding additional proposed work for the twenty twenty one road resurfacing program. And further that the committee recommends that council direct staff to bring a report to council dealing detailing the cost to hard top, the roads that were previously hard topped and converted to gravel. And I know Counselor Smith was discussing how we could accept further into the resolution, but since Rob's already taken a road out of that list, that's going to really chop up this resolution. I I don't know if we want to start piecing in things that were, or if we want to just take that budget and figure out how we can make it work with whatever roadless we decide on, but it's up to you guys.
Okay, so we we did hear that resolution. I will call to see if there's anyone that wants to move in second. Counselor Clark?
Can I just make a statement, please?
Yes, sorry.
Quickly, I'll be very quick. Like, Rob, I I know that we're we're set on this and figure a hundred and maybe the time when they were up there at Dunn or Klondike or Bowden, there wasn't a hundred that day. But I I know that all these other roads, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy, two hundred, they're not every day. I I don't know, like, I'm I'm just worried about my roads. They are well, there's 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 a lot of traffic on them, they're well traveled. But this, I I just wondering, is that going to be one of the major criterias? It's going to be the hundred count?
That was not in the resolution.
Okay.
That's not what Mallory read. So I had a mover which was Counselor Clark and a seconder which was Deputy Mayor Kennedy, if I'm correct. And so then I, we, if you want the resolution repeated, let me know. You and I remember what she just said. Okay, so I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Okay, so that carries. More work for Rob. Hopefully, we will be able to make a decision on April twenty-seventh and move this forward. Councillor Smith, go ahead.
Well, just to Rob, Rob, is there anything else you'd like to note to gain to bring this list back? Is there any guidance that we should be providing, or do you think you've heard what all you need to hear?
Sorry, yeah, I, I've, I've heard lots, yeah.
So well put, thank you.
Okay. So we'll move into item F, four F, which is, uh, landfill revenue and report there. So John Watson.
Yeah, good morning, everyone. Um, this report is just summarizing the twenty twenty landfill revenue and then also the first quarter of twenty twenty-one. Um, in twenty twenty, Dycehurst Landfills generated five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in tipping fee revenue, an additional ninety-two thousand dollars in scrap metal revenue. And, uh, so far this first quarter of twenty twenty-one, uh, we've generated seventy-seven thousand in tipping fees and additional fifteen thousand in scrap metal revenue.
Any questions on that? Deputy Mayor Kennedy, go ahead.
I'm just wondering, John, in, in the twenty twenty-one, if you could add a couple of, uh, columns as far as revenue coming in, and, uh, the two that I would be looking for would be the how many times are we charging people, uh, the, the fee for the having more than ten percent recyclables in their regular garbage? And I'd like to keep track on what we're collecting on we, uh, yard waste fees.
Sure. Yep, good point. I'm wondering, uh, John, do you think the tipping fees will go down now that some of the commercial people are not coming into, they're going straight to an, an alternate, uh, land waste disposal site?
Yeah, we'll see, we'll probably see a decrease in revenue in the pre-approved credit accounts. Um, just based on that commercial garbage no longer coming to our sites. However, I anticipate, again, the construction, uh, work that's happening is already quite high this season, so I anticipate it will continue to grow um, into twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, and I believe councillor Smith had a question for you.
And thank you. John, uh, could you educate me on how the, uh, the scrap metal, uh, revenue works? Like, do, do we pay, uh, somebody to haul those bins away, or do they take the bins away? Uh, no cost to us, uh, separate the various metals and pay us so much per pound for aluminum versus cast iron, or how does, how does that work?
Yeah, so we have a contract with an organization called Gerdau and they collect the material at no cost to us. And then they reimburse us monthly for all of the, uh, metal that they've taken in to, to recycle.
And it's, it is separated so that if, if there's a lot of aluminum, for example, in one particular bin, we get more for that than we do if a bin that's got, you know, regular steel in or something?
Um, I know, I know they're separating the material on their end, I'm not sure if we're getting a different price for the material type, I'd have to go back and look at our agreement with them.
All right, I'd be curious what that is to, is to, uh, you know, how, how, how that actually works. But, uh, it's good to know that we don't pay them anything to haul the bins, they just come when the bins are full, we tell them and good, thank you.
Uh, Rob?
Yeah, and just to piggyback on that, and just a reminder to council that our, our revenue from, uh, scrap last year was extraordinarily high. And that's because we cleaned out the roads garage as well. So that wasn't necessarily scrap that was coming through the landfill gate, it was all the scrap at the roads garage as well.
Okay, good to know. A motion to receive, mover, seconder, please. Councillor Wood Roberts, councillor Smith. Be resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges, received the twenty, uh, twenty landfill revenue and the twenty twenty-one first quarter landfill revenue summaries. All in favor? Carrie? Earth Week.
So April twenty-second next week is Earth Day. Uh, so in partnership with the other local municipalities, the county and the library, we're doing a social media campaign all of next week promoting different aspects of kind of environmentalism. Uh, the library will also be doing online programming related to, uh, Earth Day and Earth Week, so there's different activities they'll be doing. Short, short report.
That's okay, and it's great to see the municipalities, uh, all, all your counterparts working together on that, that's really great. Any questions or a motion to receive? Uh, Deputy Mayor Kennedy and councillor Smith. Be resolved that the committee, the whole receives the Earth Week twenty twenty-one report for information. All in favor? Okay, Carrie? And, um, the food waste organics update.
Uh, so back in November, council or committee directed us to report back quarterly on kind of organics, uh, updates. So this report just summarizes some of the activity that happened. Um, some different vendors have reached out to us about doing, uh, in-vessel composting at one of our sites. And there's going to come back to a proposal with us, uh, to us later on this year. Um, we've always been doing some social media posts about backyard composting and digesters being available for purchase. Um, and coming up this, uh, in, later on this month, um, Abbey Gardens will be presenting findings from the research project about composting. Um, and then in the tax bill insert that's going up to, to rate payers in May, that will include information about backyard composting and digesters as well. Um, not mentioned in this report, but additionally, uh, Malgogwain Highlands has been in discussion with the other local municipalities, including Dyceart, about, uh, an, an in-home digesting unit that they're potentially making available, uh, through a bulk purchase program that people could purchase and it actually generates the compost within your house. Um, so we're actually working with the county as well, just to see what options are available for, um, our respective residents to be able to buy one of these composting units, um, through this bulk purchase program. There'd be no fee or anything to the municipality, but we're just looking at exploring those options.
Okay, thank you, John, and, and can you explain if someone wanted to purchase a composter or digester, who did they contact and how, and with COVID, how did they pay and, and receive it?
Yeah, definitely, so if anyone's interested in getting a backyard composter or digester, they're available at the, a Halliburton landfill during regular operating hours and we accept a debit card and credit card for payments.
And, and they're there on site, so they can just go to?
They are, yeah.
Okay, that's awesome. Yeah, I've seen that on Facebook. Okay, any questions about the food waste organics, councillor Smith?
Thank you, thanks, John, for the, uh, for the update. You mentioned, uh, and I think you're going to attend the presentation later this week from, uh, uh, Samuel Doh, the student from Trent, that's presenting to the Abbey Gardens board. Um, he actually did his presentation also at the recent U-Links, uh, uh, celebration day there on a Saturday, a, a week or so back. And, um, and so it's an interesting, uh, uh, you know, a report in terms of what he learned from a survey of over two hundred residents and, uh, lots of concerns about, uh, backyard composting, uh, because of bears. Um, but, um, people, uh, you know, his, one of his conclusions is that people are likely to participate in a centralized program. So if they could take their organic waste somewhere, um, they'd be happy to do that. And in fact, I continue to hear from, you know, uh, uh, individual residents who, uh, who think that it's a shame that we don't offer that. And, uh, and, you know, you and Rob and others have said, well, it's, we don't have an ECA that allows us to accept organics as a separate stream. Um, and, um, and so I was wondering, what is the process? You know, given that we're, we're going to, you're going to see this data on Thursday, that Sam was going to tell you. If, if people will participate in organic waste, uh, you know, if you give them a place to take it. And they go to our landfills, what would be the process? What would be the timeline that would require for you to go through the ECA to get permission, or at least to try and get permission, to accept organics as a separate stream at some or all of our landfills?
So I can speak definitely about the Halliburton landfill, because the ECA does provide an option for collecting food waste organics. That has a one-year timeline built into it, that as soon as you tell the ministry you want to do it, they have one year to review that before they even grant permission to accept food waste. There's, the questions become from council's direction, are we wanting to compost on site? And is council willing to fund the equipment and staffing necessary to make that composting on-site necessary? Or are we going to haul out the food waste to a composting facility? Um, the most likely one being Peterborough, which won't open until twenty twenty-four. So those are some of the questions that council has to provide direction on, what, what options it would prefer us to explore.
So, um, what would it take? I've, I've learned the only way that we can't, we'll make the decision today. But what would it take for you then to bring a report to council to get that process started? Um, so that we could make this, commence that one-year cycle with the, uh, with the province on the A C, ECA. What would it take for you to bring that report back with a recommendation? Could you do that, uh, next, uh, like in two weeks at the council meeting, or do you want to wait till, uh, May?
Uh, I, I think I'll let other councillors, uh, uh, talk before John. He, so that's your, let's see what other councillors have to say, deputy mayor Kennedy?
I just, I just wondered if councillor Smith's getting a cart before the horse here. We haven't even made a decision on whether we're going to recommend to move in that direction yet, before we have staff to bring forward a report. Um, I don't know if that's, it may be premature at this time, I that's just my only comment.
Yeah, I think.
I don't, I, I don't know how to get the, the discussion and the decision without giving John, uh, a request that he bring forward a report with a recommendation. And council could turn it down, obviously, but, you know, um, we, we've been talking about organics as an issue in our community, uh, for months at least. And there are many people in our community who are passionate about this, that they'd like a way, um, not just individually, but even businesses, restaurants, grocery stores, to, uh, to be able to have that, uh, uh, you know, uh, organic waste uh, treated as something other than garbage, where we throw it in a container and then truck it off to either Watford or Chatham, Ontario, more than five hundred kilometers. It, it, it makes no sense.
Uh, councillor McKechny?
Yeah, um, John Watson, while you're, uh, doing these reports, can you please do me a report on, um, incinerating garbage in, in the county of Halliburton? Thank you very much.
Um, I understand and, and, and agree with your passion on, on organic waste, and I think that's why we did ask, uh, John Watson to do quarterly reports.
I was talking about, uh, uh, incinerating garbage.
Yes, I know, uh, I know you were.
It's not important, I guess, is it?
Councillor McKechny, that's not true. Not one, I, I, when we receive a report and we start to go off topic on that, I try to get it back on topic. We're not, we're talking about, I've got a report right here and basically committee, the whole receives it. Councillor Smith is asking, how do we move things forward? How do we move objectives forward? And, um, so I, I think that, uh, John Watson is working towards that with his counterparts in the county. We know of a situation in Peterborough that's going to be accepting organic waste. Um, Mallory, did you want to speak to that?
I just wanted to say, if councillors ever want to add a report to come forward, that's why there's a notice of motion category at the end of agenda. So if, when Mayor Robert says, are there any notice of motions? That's your opportunity to say, yes, I have a notice of motion. And then you say what your motion is, and the rest of council decides if they want to move forward with that motion in a future meeting. And that's their opportunity to turn it down too. So that's how we should handle new ideas going forward.
Right, and I, and I think that John Watson is working with his counterparts and is, is going, what was the meeting that you said you're going to be later this week?
Yeah, on April fifteenth, the Abbey Gardens presentation on the research they've been doing on composting.
So I think maybe it's slow, but we are moving forward in this direction to try to find the right, uh, situation. And that's why I asked again about the purchase of the composters and digesters for home use, while I realize that that isn't ideal for everybody. Um, for whatever situation, maybe they're in an apartment or, or are not able to have the composter or digester at home. And I think it's important that we move forward with this, but slowly. So I'd be a little reluctant to give John, uh, too much direction at this point. I'd like to hear back of the next quarterly report, which he's, has been directed by all council to do and, and to continue for, uh, quarterly reports. If that's, uh, councillor Clark?
Yeah, I, I think it's unfair to be dumping, um, something like, you know, um, a major report on composting or, or, or organic. John, at this point, Peterborough was just identified, it's going to take them three years to get this stuff in place. And we're telling John, stop all other work and start working on a report. Um, in, in all respect, Mr. Councillor Smith, you, you don't know what you're asking for. You know, you're, you're dumping a load of work on something, you don't know what the, what the dynamics of it are. So let John do his job, he's, he's the most professional person we've got around the area environment. And, you know, as, as, as a, a lead going forward, I'm sure he will guide us on, on how we're going to get there, but thank you.
Yeah, so let, let's, uh, receive this quarterly report and, uh, uh, John Watson can report on his, at the next quarterly report of these different meetings, the Abbey Gardens, additionists, et cetera. And keep us abreast of other initiatives. So can I get a mover and a seconder to receive this? Councillor Wood Roberts, councillor Clark? Be resolved, committee, the whole received food waste organics update report for information, all in favor? Okay, that's Carrie. Uh, the draft bylaw to govern the management of waste, this is an incredible, uh, amount of work, speaking of giving John Watson work, this is, uh, you've done an enormous amount of work on this. And, um, I, I, we've never had anything like this before. Uh, so I'll let you speak to it and then open up the floor for questions.
It's definitely been a labor of love. Um, as you can see, it's quite a lengthy bylaw and it's, uh, maybe a bit more robust than the current bylaw that we have in place. Um, this new proposed bylaw also incorporates, uh, things around behaviors at landfill sites, illegal dumping, public space litter bins, multi-residential buildings and special events on municipal properties. So we tried to be all encompassing and put all of, all of waste in one place. Um, other departments within the municipality were obviously, uh, consulted during the development of this bylaw. And we also looked at, um, our neighboring municipalities. Um, some of the work, they're also working on their bylaws and other municipalities in Ontario for best practices. So it is quite a, a lengthy document, but, um, our plan obviously is to kind of take back any feedback and, and come back to council on the twenty-seventh, uh, with the final bylaw to, to commence May first.
Okay, uh, Deputy Mayor Kennedy, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, uh, John, clarification, ICI materials, could they only be transported by a commercial hauler?
They should be, um. The challenge is when, if, if you're picking up from multiple locations, then you are running a business picking up garbage. And so you need to be qualified to, to do that.
Okay, the, the only reason I'm asking, I, I don't want to lead you down the path, is in your definitions, you're showing that, uh, ICI, uh, materials include places of worship and even, uh, vegetable stands. So and, and my concern is, is that, and bread and breakfast are included in that, so I just want to make sure that the guy that's selling a tomato at the end of the driveway doesn't have to hire a, a commercial contractor to take his garbage to the dump.
No, in that situation, they'd be taking it themselves, so they, as the individual rate payer. If they, if they were suddenly collecting from multiple vendors, um, then they'd be uh, running into this situation where they're a waste hauler and need to be licensed by the ministry.
So doesn't ICI transport have to be licensed now by the ministry?
If they're picking up from multiple locations.
Multiple locations. Okay, I just don't want to see that happen secondary then. Um, nine point five, the access, you've got a lot in here that's usually in a site plan agreement, why is it in a bylaw now?
Um, part of it was in consultation with the planning and land information department was just to, uh, make sure that recycling was being included within, uh, those site plan amendments. And also, for example, to, to accommodate some of the variations around having a chute system, if that was something the developer wanted to have. Or, um, the use of the in-ground, uh, collection systems, which we're seeing now being used in a lot of, uh, locations. So really this was, uh, is following best practices from other jurisdictions, especially as, uh, multi-residential recycling is becoming a big issue, trying to capture more recycling from those buildings. And we're seeing more of those buildings being built within the municipality.
That's, that's why I was asking, because you've got things in here like turning radiuses and with the driveways and no backing into the public. And those are all considered that recently just came before council with a project. And we're able to have some flexibility to help, uh, that person, uh, get through the, the site plan agreement process. And now it's going to be in, embedded in a bylaw, which is even tougher to, to negotiate individual circumstances, be my thought, um, I just, I, I disagree with nine point five anyways.
And I duly noted, I mean, part of that, I And I duly noted, I mean, part of that I think is to. Uh really reiterate to council that some of these are safety issues, right? A collection vehicle should never be reversing. That is the this definition of safety. And so if if a site plan requires a collection vehicle to reverse, then council has to be aware that they are authorizing. An unsafe practice essentially, right?
What do we do with the with the grocery trucks anyways? I'll leave it.
It's been reversed right on the main street. I was just trying to I was way down at schedule L for something. I just you know. Glad to see the whole thing for special events because I've been involved with the several. Special events coming Headlake Park and we were proactive uh and not selling water bottles before. That was even a bylaw and also um ensuring that um there's nothing worse than seeing one of those big garbage bins and uh the big blue tub ones. Half full of.
Uh that content uh would be part of a site plan agreement. Uh a bylaw shouldn't prescribe how a uh an apartment building, for example. Uh operates their chutes. Um you know, uh they may decide that they're not going to use chutes and they're going to have a banned monkey support. In the waste. They might do a better job than people putting it in a chute. So. Um you know, I to me, uh that's the site plan agreement. Those are our building and planning issues. Um. But if I start at the at the front end there, John, in definitions. Uh your definition for private property. And your definition for for prohibited substances. Uh both of those uh have errors in them. There's something they they don't make sense the way they're currently set up. Um so I'd ask you to to revisit those. I'd also note that uh. You know, you've uh you've picked on short term renters here as a concept. Uh when you define them as anybody renting for up to fourteen days. And you're saying that landfill cards cannot be loaned or provided to short term renters. So if somebody has a cottage or any residents in our community. That uh that they rent to uh anybody. For uh could be renting at Uncle Bob for a a week or two during the summer. Um and they leave their landfill card there. You're saying that that's contrary to our bylaw and that because that person's a short term renter. They actually need to go and buy a a you know a a permit to uh for the renter to dispose of their garbage. To me, that's uh um that's the wrong approach. And um if uh if the owner of that residence. Is willing to provide uh the use of their. Landfill card, the one that they secured because they pay thousands of dollars in taxes for my property. And they happen to rent it out to for us to say you have to. Uh in fact, it's against our bylaw for you to loan your landfill card. That's what you seem to be saying. Is that correct?
That is the way the current bylaw has been interpreted, that the the landfill card is for the rate payer of that property. It's not to be transferred or loaned. I have a copy of the current landfill card that even says it won't be loaned or transferred. So it's just kind of clarifying and making uh I think a bit more clear what the policy interpretation is at the moment.
Yeah, well, I I I I'd like for for council to provide some direction to change that. Because to me, that's wrong. Um you know, I find it interesting that uh. Your policy number one, I know you didn't write policy number one, but you included in this package. If I have a multi uh unit uh building. I as the owner of that building am entitled. Uh each year to get two landfill cards for each of my tenants that know card. And um. Um and so I allow them to do that, but I don't allow somebody who rents out their cottage, even if they rented it to uh you know, as I said, Uncle Bob. Um they can't lend out their their landfill card. They're not going to get an extra one. You can't even allow somebody else. Use landfill card is what you're is what you're saying. And you're clarifying that and and making it illegal under the terms of our bylaw.
We used to when we did the cottage kits, we would have a single use temporary, like a one-time use and it was collected. When we did cottage kits, is there what what are we doing um? What are we doing for short term rentals that they can take their garbage to the landfill and how's that or they have to pay?
So currently, um the the way the bylaw is interpreted is that any short term renter uh is required to use a one-time landfill pass, which currently costs two dollars. Um and that enables them to drop off up to one bag of garbage and unlimited recycling. Um that card can be purchased either by the renter or by the owner of the property. Uh council has approved that starting May first, that fee will now be five dollars and that allows the short term renter to drop off up to three bags of garbage and clear bags and unlimited recycling.
Yeah, and that and that's what I'm objecting to. You're interpreting that as short term renters. Um I'll I'll take the view that anybody. Um you know, can pay the five dollars. If I could be a property owner who's lost my card or forgotten my card, I could be driving through Daisart, uh traveling between Bancroft and Bracebridge and decide I want to get rid of some garbage and I can buy one of those five dollar cards.
Our our E C A actually does not allow us to accept garbage from outside of Daisart.
So I understand.
You can't sell it to people that's driving through.
We exactly. We don't know though. Uh uh you know, when somebody pulls into the landfill. And I used in my email to you an example of of a cottage owner up here. Who has on his his keychain is a landfill card taped onto a piece of masonite. When I asked him, well, what did you do that for? Well, when I rent my place out. My tenants. Those short term renters. Can take that landfill card and the key and they can go to the dump and get rid of their garbage. They have to bring it back because it's key. Um you know, and you and you're saying now that's going to be an illegal activity. Um I I.
The interpretation that that has always been against the bylaw.
Well.
Not new.
Now that we're fixing the bylaw, let's 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 bring it back to reality. And uh have a bylaw that we can actually uh you know enforce. And uh and and it's consistent with what we think is right. And it's not right to charge somebody. Ten thousand dollars a year in property taxes. And they get two, they think they get two things for their property taxes. They get roads. And they get access to landfill. And to say, well, because you're you've rented it out your Uncle Bob for two weeks. You're going to have to, you can't loan your card to him. You know, that's not enforceable. It's not right.
Mayor wants to speak to an Oswald Mallory.
When the cottage kits were first put into place between us and other municipalities, a lot of it was demand from the cottagers themselves. Because they didn't like leaving their dump card at home because most times people would take it with them back to the city when they were done at the landfill, going home on a Sunday. They'd come in, try and get another card from us and they wouldn't be able to without paying twenty five dollars. So it 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 started off from the cottage rental and wanting this convenience to be able to buy these for their renters without having to leave their permanent card. Just to give a little bit of background.
The renter has the ability to go to a landfill. For the one time use. Right? Okay, Mallory?
I I also just wanted to point out that we don't we don't categorize renters in a multi-unit building who live in the area the same as we do a short term renter because I know what you're saying, John, that. Someone who owns a building where tenants rent for their lives, that's what they do. Um they're able to buy multiple cards and give to their tenants. Very different situation than someone renting for fourteen days. That's someone who lives in our township. Um but I I I also was going to add to Tamara's point. This was actually, this was actually driven by cottage owners because they were losing their cards. So that this is why it's offered. Um. Yeah, so that that's why it's a it's a process we have in place that they can do this and get rid of it. So.
I have objection to offering the choice if people don't want to lend out their landfill card. But to make it illegal to lend out your landfill card. That's my problem. Think that's inappropriate. Uh but it'll be up to uh up to council, obviously. Uh just to go further, uh. Uh you know, through your bylaw, John, in in section four point one five C. Uh you're indicating uh schedule F defines hazardous waste and it can only be taken to a landfill. On your hazardous waste, a drop off at those that single day per year. Um out of convenience and good practice, as you know. Most of our landfills today accept some of the things that are defined as hazardous waste. Anytime somebody wants to bring it. Like fluorescent tubes, for example, there's a bin at West Guilford. You can pick the fluorescent tube in there whenever you want. To say in your bylaw that you're only going to accept those things. Um you know, on the one day per year at West Guilford is inconsistent with our own behavior and I think it's inconsistent with the good practice where we. Actually accept those things when people want to bring them. I think and so I think the bylaw needs to reflect. You know, our existing practice.
Yeah, and some of those materials that sorry, just gonna say some of those materials that we do accept year round because they're empty, like the propane tanks and propane cylinders. Those are. No longer considered hazardous waste. Some of the E C As actually say we should not be accepting any fluorescent tubes at all. And so uh by accepting them, we're knowingly contravening the E C A on our sites, uh which we've been admittedly doing.
Yeah. Well, you know, we don't get to rewrite the E C A, but we do write our own bylaws. And so what I'm suggesting is the bylaw ought to be consistent with our our practice. Twelve point six and twelve point seven. Uh talk about uh late payments. And and this is a problem that I is we're going to have another bylaws, draft bylaws later today also. We seem to be inconsistent in terms of the interest rate. Uh Barbara's on the call here. She noticed rate on overdue tax payments is one and a quarter percent per month. Um this bylaw in twelve point seven references one point five percent per month. Um another bylaw later today talks about one point five, another one talks about one point two five. Um rather than embedding the interest rate in the bylaw. I was wondering if we might change all of the bylaws that have overdue charges related to them. To a statement that says the interest rate will be consistent with that defined each year by council for overdue tax payments. So that would always be. Unless we change the one and a quarter percent, that would apply to all delinquent payments as opposed to having one point five here. You know, and um so. Maybe you and Barbara could talk that over, but it it just doesn't seem to me sense to be to have two different late payment fees.
Okay, uh Barbara's not off screen for just a minute.
Maybe Tamara can come in on that. I don't know. Is it? I mean, is there a rationale for having a late payment fee of one point five percent for one thing and one point five percent for something else?
Uh we would have to review and come back to that.
All right. You know, it because when twelve point six references it uh you know, being added to the tax bill. Uh on the tax bill, it's only going to be one and a quarter percent. Um you're getting going to get into a debate with the person. Why did you charge me one and a half percent for the first three months and then you changed it to the tax bill, made it one to four percent? This doesn't make any sense.
I I think um I definitely I'll talk to Barbara and Tamara to clarify this, but I think it has to do with one is a. I don't I don't want to use a penalty, but one is for a financial late payment and one is for a late payment on a. Penalty to the bylaw. So I think I I understand what you're saying. So I think we can clarify what those what it should be make either be consistent or or just clarify it.
Yeah, and if if we can relate it to that annual fee that council sets, that way of interest rates, if we go back to a world like we had in the nineteen eighties where mortgages are twenty percent a year. Um you know, we might not, but we might say one and a quarter percent. That's not enough for late payments on your taxes. We're going to write it up to two percent per month. So. Um John, twelve point eight. Um you know, you have the statement there about repeated written orders and fines uh or penalties. I wondered if uh if you might be more specific and swear to say after one written order or something like that. Repeated is, you know, could go on for seven times. It's it's pretty vague. Um twelve point eleven B. Um you use the term termination. Well, you know, you could say that a restriction or a suspension ends. But a termination can end. A termination is the end. Once you terminate something, it's over. So I think you need to uh work on rephrasing uh twelve eleven B. And uh and then I go into some of the schedules.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm I'm wondering if um. Just for the sake of time, I it uh. I'm I'm just I'm struggling here too. I'm I'm not, maybe it's just me because I'm not feeling well and I'm not trying to go on to that, but um. Your use of time and I know we're allowed to debate things and everything else, but I'm wondering if 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 it's. Things like the word termination could be perhaps sent to John in an email. It's a linguistics thing. It's a small thing. Is there anything glaring that you'd like to point out? That that we I still want to go back to nine point five. That's a pretty big section whether we're keeping it in or altering it. But I'm just trying to keep keep aware of the time.
Well, uh. Madam Mayor, uh. Uh we just got this forty seven page document on Thursday night. I've I've. As I do, I've read every word and every page. There are a number of problems with it. Uh you are the one that told me not to email staff that uh that I put too much pressure on them. So I uh. I'm not emailing John. I'm uh discussing this at a committee meeting. That's I thought that's what committee meetings are for.
I know, I I'm just uh continue. I may have to take, you know what I'm going to do for myself? I'm going, I'm I need to uh leave the meeting. I'm going to turn it over to um. Deputy Mayor Kennedy to chair and I'm going to turn my uh. My camera off and then after this section Deputy Mayor Kennedy, I I may come back in. I will text you and let you know. Hey? Sorry, are you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm sorry, I just have to leave.
Okay, uh councillor Smith?
Thank you. I I just continuing, John, as you get into the schedules, uh schedule C. The uh two F there. Um it should be window glass, I think. Not I'm not sure what widow glass is. Uh but if you check there, I think you've got a little typo that uh. Widow glass is not. Same thing in schedule E two F. Uh insulation is spelled with a U. I don't know. Is that schedule E two F? Schedule F. In section two D. Um you have uh household batteries and automotive batteries are amongst hazardous waste. As you know, household batteries are not hazardous waste. We in fact uh will take those and uh we get paid to collect them. Uh so I think you should delete household batteries from that uh. Um list because you accept them at all sites any day. And in uh in schedule H, uh one A. Um item five. You talk about battery packs. Maybe you could spell out there that that would include or not include that battery packs for portable power tools. So if somebody's got an old uh. Uh you know, fourteen volt or nineteen volt battery from a power drill or whatever. Tell them whether those are accepted or not accepted as part of batteries. Schedule J. Why do we say contaminated soil? Um we don't accept soil period. As it as you turn out in schedule J. So in the past, you've talked about not accepting contaminated soil. I think we need to be safe here and be consistent throughout the document. We don't accept soil in a job. Contaminated or non-contaminated. That's what your uh your rules actually seem to say. And I wonder if schedule K. You've as you've gone through these schedules, you've uh you you say things you accept and don't accept and then it's schedule A, you've got everything you don't accept. One of the reasons this document is so long is that it's sometimes a little repetitive. And uh and that's all I had in terms of of this general governance. I've got some different things on the uh the fees and charges by law, but uh. Um you know, things to work on improving there and uh. Uh but in particular, I'm uh I think this treatment of of renters is problematic. And um I'd be okay with offering a choice and that that choice ought to allow me, if I'm a renter, I don't rent my place.
I've already been through that four times. So um that's enough discussion on that. Can we uh move forward then, John? Have you got some um enough material here to maybe look at? Some options, bringing back a modified bylaw for the next next meeting?
Yeah, definitely. Um one, just for clarification, there seemed to be some discussion about the multi residential property, section nine.
Yeah.
Should I keep that in or? Should I keep that in or move it into a guideline, like, what's council's direction on that?
Um I think you don't mind, but I'd, I'd be willing, I'd like to hear from other counselors about what their feelings are. Uh nine point five was the uh guidelines around where bins and that type of thing could be, uh Rob, is you got your hand up?
Yeah, and just thinking about it during, during the conversation, um I, I tend to agree with those who disagree with it. Because my problem with it now, it wasn't initially, is if there's a, a property that's subject to site plan control, but it is waived. Then these regulations still apply to them. And so again, it should be, I, I agree now in, in hindsight, that it probably should be left to the site plan um protocol.
Uh further comment, consensus to remove that uh reference, Counselor Smith?
Yeah, I'm great with removing that reference, the, the other thing though that I think you need here. Is a uh, uh multi-unit residence needs to be a defined term. Because when you talk about residence, um that seems to cover anything up to six units. Frankly, most of us would say that somebody that's got four, five, six units is a multi-unit residence, but. You define that as a residence. But so I think you need a definition for multi-unit residents included in here, John.
There is, there is a definition for multi-residential buildings, which is anything over six units. Part of that six unit reference point is from provincial regulations around blue box recycling, what they classify. Um when they, there's actually a whole bunch of other stuff provincially that anyone with six units or more needs to be doing around. Waste reduction plans that are actually posted and um ensuring that recycling is happening within their buildings. But I can definitely clarify that definition.
So we have consensus on removing that, uh Counselor Clark, go ahead.
Yeah, 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 to support that, that, that particular thing about the backing up and that, I think can, should be dealt with through um. Either Jeff files or, or Carl. In terms of what, how they do the, the site plans, they're the ones who have to um enforce it, so. To be pulled out of here and, and coordinated somehow.
So Mallory, do we need to incorporate anything into um the report then, or how do we?
So, the, the resolution says that um they're providing staff direction, which they are. Um I've been noting changes, that's how we typically do bylaws, so um I think we're okay as long as John's okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm feeling, I'm feeling good about this, yeah.
Okay.
Um I don't have any of the resolutions in front of me, Mallory, so.
Yeah, I don't mind reading it.
To you.
Yeah. And so, so Pat, would you like, oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Kennedy, would you like to call for a mover and a seconder and I can read it?
I'm thinking of a mover and a seconder for the uh Counselor Clark, Counselor Smith.
All right, be it resolved that the committee, the whole receives the draft waste management bylaw twenty twenty-one dash XX. And provides staff direction on further updates or revisions to be included in the bylaw. And further that staff are directed to bring the bylaw to the April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one meeting of regular council for adoption. Is that enough time for turnaround, John?
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, you've heard the motion, uh all in favor? And that's passed, thank you. Uh next one, draft bylaw. For uh fees and charges.
Yeah, so these, this is a, would be a revised or new uh bylaw for fees. Specifically Schedule D is related to the waste management fees. Pretty much all these fees have been approved by council previously at the meeting in March. So it's just now on paper, all in one place. Uh and so again, this, this would come back to council on the twenty-seventh for final approval for commencement on May first.
Yeah, and further, uh Counselor Smith, the appropriate time then to review percent rates on overdue accounts would probably be when we look at the whole. Fee bylaw, which is normally done earlier in the year, that'd be my interpretation, Mallory? We've already agreed all these fees, basically the waste fees, but uh the bigger picture that Counselor Smith's referring to would be. Another, not within this today.
Yeah, I think, I think um Counselor Smith was referring to, there is a section in that last bylaw that talks, that speaks to, to rates as well, so. Yes, if we did a review of all of them, we could, we could clean it up in the other bylaw as well, if we came to determination of how we wanted to do it going forward.
That work for you, Counselor Smith, if we take that?
Yeah, uh that, that other uh, that, that topic we just passed in terms of governance, talked about one and a half percent. This one, on page three here, number seven, has one point two five percent uh as the overdue charge. Um and uh, and later uh, in our agenda today, uh Rob's got another bylaw he's bringing in that's also. So got one point five percent in it, and my suggestion is that we take all of those statements. And turn them into a generic statement that says, the interest rate or the overdue charge will be the amount that's set each year by council. Because Barbara brings forward as part of the uh, uh tax uh, uh payments. Um a uh, uh a tax rate, a rate that we set for tax payments, and right now it's one point two five percent per month. All of these things ought to have the same interest rate on them, and the best way to do that is with a generic statement for each bylaw.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I think we're at the same page here, Counselor Smith, I'm just thinking like an omnibus bill when it comes forward. That will just open up the whole, the whole fee bylaw and, and corrected at that time rather than taking these each one, one at a time. I think if we have notes in here that uh recommendation be that to review fee bylaws in twenty twenty-two when it comes up. To incorporate um possible um commonality of, of overdue accounts might be a, a way to address that, Mallory?
I'm noting it here in the minutes. We'll do it that way.
Any other comments on, on this bylaws that's presented draft, Counselor Smith?
Um yeah, there's a, a couple of areas that uh I think is as a result of converting it into a PDF. Uh but uh, uh where you've got uh. Charges related to the shoreline uh road allowance purchase, uh also surveying. Um the uh, the description box is abbreviated. And it may be because you uh, you didn't open it up, the Word document before you converted it to PDF documents. So you've got sort of a hanging statements there, if you like.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that formatting, that, that's a previous bylaw, so that's already.
Alright, but if you look under surveying there at the bottom of page four of uh, of the overall document. It says the applicant to arrange directly with. And obviously, there should be something after the word with. That um has been cut off by the PDF conversion process. That's in Schedule A. Same issue with the shoreline road allowance purchase.
Okay, so that's just part of.
Now, I, I don't think this, we're not intending right now to update the uh fees for the arena fees. Um that'll be something, we're gonna do that sometime in twenty twenty-one, but that's coming later, I presume.
Yeah, that's.
Is that correct?
Thought we already set the arena fees for twenty twenty-one, like that's been completed, uh we're looking at twenty, we'll be looking at twenty twenty-two.
Well, for the, for the new season that starts in September, whatever, presumably.
I'm not sure you'd have to, where we're at with that one. Um Mallory, do you have any?
Um Andrea is our next uh member, so we'll ask, we can ask her to comment on that, but this is, this, this report. Has been, is Schedule D that we're, we're referring right now, only waste man. And that's all that we've, we've noticed for in the paper and so on as well.
So in, in Schedule B. Under construction waste, you've got uh contaminated soil. I, I think you want to change that to soil. We're not, we're not accepting any kind of soil, right?
Correct, the change, the change of that happens starting May first is that we're no longer accepting contaminated soil, because we did previously. I could change that to, to just be soil.
Well, my understanding from the other one, other document is you're not, you don't want soil at all, and that makes sense. Why, why do we accept soil when we're carrying the garbage away to point afar, right?
Admittedly, sometimes clean soil, if we're using it, if we're needing for an active landfill for daily cover. That that's, it is helpful to get clean fill occasionally, like through arrangement with us. Um I know Rob, he wants to jump in on that.
Uh yeah, in, in the past, we have accepted clean fill as intermediate cover. Um you know, we can't use it for top cover because generally it doesn't have any organics in it, and people don't want to give away top soil. Um but as we uh, as we transfer, go to a transfer station, yeah, I think soil's just become a, a moot point.
Yeah, I was just saying that this schedule ought to be consistent with that. Don't just say contaminated soil, you're not accepting soil from a construction waste. And I note again, under the hazardous weights there, the issue of fluorescent tubes, um so I think we need to be consistent there. And, and finally, I've, I've got uh, a uh, a suggestion from uh. I, I had a constituent uh contact me after they made a recent visit to the landfill site with some bags of leaves. And found out that after May first, they're gonna have to pay two dollars a bag. And so I received a nasty email saying uh, like, what are you, what are you people in council, you're crazy, why are you charging me to drop off leaves? It, it was such a lengthy email, I decided to phone him instead of uh responding by email, because I could see a, a long debate. We spoke for about half an hour, where I explained the rationale and the fact that uh handling waste was very expensive and that. Act, we were now transferring most of it off to these faraway distances. And he listened very carefully and uh, sent me an email the next day and said he thought about it, said, you know, you're right. I shouldn't be taking leaves to the landfill anymore, and I've set up a compost corner on the side of my property, and I'll take all my leaves and brush there in the future. But if you guys are serious about eliminating people taking leaves to the landfill. Why are you charging a, a, an annoyance fee of two dollars a bag? Why don't you charge five or ten dollars a bag and make it clear to people you don't want leaves? And uh, and I thought it was a, a thoughtful email, I, I forwarded it to John. And, and I'm gonna suggest that uh, it was so thoughtful that as council. Um you know, we should update this, and in fact, start charging five dollars per bag. Uh for.
Discussion, Counselor Smith, and it was agreed uh, that we're gonna leave it at two for now. I don't, uh that's already been done, discussed uh, and voted on and mo- and we're moving on, thank you. Um any other comments on the, on this uh, as presented? Hey, a call for the motion?
I've got the same issue on page twelve here with respect to uh, the one-time landfill pass that we label for short-term renters. I, I object to the uh concept of a landfill pass for short-term renters.
Um Mallory, next up, please.
Read the motion, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, be it resolved that the committee, the whole receives the draft fees and charges by law twenty twenty-one dash XX. Specifically Schedule D waste man- management fees. And provide staff direction on further updates or revisions to be included in the bylaw. And further that staff are directed to bring the bylaw to the April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one meeting of regular council, council for adoption.
I guess I forgot a mover and a seconder, Mallory.
Okay, you can call it now.
Okay, I'd call for a mover and a seconder, uh Counselor Clark. Second year, please. Counselor McKechnie, all in favor? And opposed? Okay. And that passes five to two. Uh next, video camera surveillance, I guess this is Andrea.
Deputy Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Um I am back on the screen, no, that's okay, I'm back on the screen. But uh, um due to my just, I'm feeling a little lightheaded and headachy. I, if it's okay, and I just want to duly noted that I'm gonna ask if it's okay if you continue to chair the meeting in the event that I have to leave. I've turned over all the resolutions to the clerk, so she can read them, I know she loves to do that. But uh I am a voting member, so I will listen, and if you see my screen go off, it means I have uh, uh left the room.
Okay.
Continue to chair, thank you.
Okay, good, I think after uh this report, we'll also take a lunch break after the video camera. Just so staff are aware, we'll be taking a break after this one, thank you. Hi Andrea.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
So I have a short report, it's for information purposes. Well, we've been working with the county IT department, I know there's been lots of discussion about video surveillance over the past few years with the skate park. And we had a camera, didn't work, didn't meet requirements, that was uh donated to us by one of the skate park committee members. Last year, there was a video surveillance policy that was pa- passed within the municipality, along with at the county as well. Um in that surveillance policy, before we put any cameras up for surveillance, there needs to be a um. A community uh consultation or, or a, a chance for the community to weigh in. Um and so, right, right now, Mike March and I are working on a, a survey or a. A little questionnaire that can be put up on our website, and that would qualify as a, as a consultation piece. Um in that, we're going to put a, put in a blurb about what we're doing and why we're doing it, um what the uh relevance is behind that. What the cost would be to the municipality if we do not have a, a such a um surveillance. Uh he's going to put in some of the guidelines that he's required, there, or that through technology as a municipality that we're required to follow to meet all. Legal requirements and everything, and then um some of the questions might be like, are you a resident of Halliburton? Do you use the skate park? Uh and, and just a few simple questions. We tried, look, both of us tried looking to see if there was something that we could base this survey upon. We can't find anything that really fits our needs, so that's why we're kind uh, creating questions. So that will come forward, um possibly the next council uh committee of the whole meeting. When then we'll have the survey out publicly out there uh for people to comment, and then have a certain amount of time allotted to that. Once it closes, we'll bring the comments back to council uh with information about costs and everything to put up surveillance technology. At the skate park, he's already done some costing and we know roughly what it is, but um he'll be doing that. And then uh we're also looking at other areas, like the visitor information center, Headlake Park, um areas like that, where we know that there's. Surveillance could be useful, um so those are things, just, just so councils aware that those things will be coming forward uh in the coming months.
Okay, uh questions? Okay, so just receiving this for information and um, off topic, um the arena rental fees.
Yes.
About for the last uh, is that up, uh, is, those fees, are they up for discussion later this year?
Yes, they are, they're definitely up for discussion, I was hoping to have them now, or even for next council, I'm waiting, I just had a meeting with um rec staff. Throughout the county last week, um and Minden is still working on. They're working on their fees as well, so what we're trying to do is once they have their fees, we can sit together and establish something similar, at least similar fees. So we're, we're relatively uniform across the county and within our neighboring, our neighboring municipalities. You know, to the east, west, and south, trying to come somewhere where we're, because right now, like our daytime rate is seventy-five dollars an hour for the day, we know that's. Really cheap, so we're looking to bump these up. Um at the same time, we need to do, this needs to be settled soon, because Highland Storm would be, like, they can, some of our other groups are looking to establish their fees for the twenty. Twenty-one, twenty-two season, so we need to have these in place, so it's just, we're just waiting right now for Minden to get back to us with their. Proposed rates, seeing as they have the new facility and everything, and then what, they, they know that we want to have, that we're discussing this, and that we're going to try and come. To some sort of agreement. To bring forward to our councils, so.
Thank you, is that, that answer your question, Counselor Smith, yeah?
Uh, thank you for raising that, and that's, yep, so it's today, I mean, coming season, it's perfect. I had another question for Andrea, if I might. Yeah, I'm really in video cameras, but uh, Andrea, as you know, pickleball has become extremely popular activity. And uh, there's demand, greater demand than uh capacity uh in terms of places to play. Um and um, one uh opportunity that uh, you know, might be investigated. Is the uh outdoor ice area uh at West Guilford. There's an asphalt surface there uh that supports the ice during the winter. And I had some pickleball players look at it, um it's certainly a big enough area if they set up an.
That's still on the agenda today, um I think uh staff are already working on, on some uh alternate sites and some uh options on that. I think a lot of us have been reached out to by the pickleball community, but it isn't on today's agenda, but now, or maybe I'm wrong.
No, I would, no, I was just gonna say that I believe we have a delegation on this topic uh coming to council this month, so we will discuss it soon.
Well, just for information. Well, just for information, you might look at that surface. It would need some sort of top coat put on it to smooth it. Because again, I had the pickleball people go by and they said, great facility, but it's it's this asphalt is too rough. Um, it'll take more than driveway sealer to smooth it, but it may be a very cheap and fast way of getting a outdoor pickleball facility in place. If you could get somebody like maybe Rob or Jeff that knows something about asphalt improvement, take a look at it and you'd have, you'd have a solution there for the delegation when they show up.
Thanks, councillor Smith. Uh, Tamara, you have a comment?
I was just gonna note that we're also looking at other grant opportunities for maybe doing some work out there, which might also conflict with that depending on the timelines as well. So just all those things to keep in mind as well with the multi-use courts and but again, when those, when the delegation comes forward, we'll have a chance to report back as staff more on what the requests are.
Thank you. Uh, anything else in Andrea? I think we're done with the with the video camera then. A mover and a secondary receive that uh, report for information. Councillor Clark, councillor McKechnie? Uh, read the resolution then, Mallory.
Be it resolved that the committee, the whole received the video camera surveillance report as information.
All in favor? And that's passed. And we'll take a thirty-minute lunch break, so reconvene at uh, where are we here? Time wise. Uh, one, one fifteen? Just turn your cameras off. Thank you. Uh, let's see, what's next here? We have the museum report. Kate, you're up.
Hello, how's everyone doing today?
Good. Thanks for your patience for making me wait over.
All good, all good, all good. So, uh, thanks to the museum, we are in a little bit of a, a holding pattern again because of the latest shutdowns. Um, of course, we we can't uh, be open the way that we normally would, but uh, you know, it's best to to stay patient in that way because that means that we're going to have opportunities in the future. So we just gotta, gotta hang in there. Um, but in the meantime, there are a lot of families looking for things to do on spring break. And uh, the spring activity kits that we partnered up with the recreation department and also the environment department on, they have been a huge hit. Um, all one hundred of them have gone to their homes and uh, I've been hearing great feedback from people, so I think it's something we're definitely gonna be looking at doing again. People really are enjoying having that opportunity to do some, uh, do some activities at home and things that families can work on together as well. So we're already talking about what we might do um, in the future. And that's the thing, you have to keep thinking outside the box in these times.
Uh, any questions from council? Uh, see, any then, uh, Mallory, next step, I guess, read the motion, please.
Be it resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledged receipt of the Halliburton Hounds Museum Report.
A mover and a secondary. Councillor Smith, councillor Clark, all in favor? And that's carried. Thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
Uh, next will be building and bylaw. We'll wait for Carl and Rob and we'll get started on that. Afternoon, gentlemen. Uh, Carl, you're up first with the building permit activity report, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon to you too. So building permit, uh, so March, we had a record March, um, lots of permits issued, high construction value, lots of fees taken in. That's basically, we issued uh, permits for seven new dwelling units.
Another busy month.
Yeah.
Probably with no signs of slowing down despite the um, material costs that seem to keep going up.
Yeah, I don't understand the
I was just saying this time I had to buy a piece of quarter inch plywood on the weekend. It was sixty-one dollars. I mean, my God, I'm better not building anything right now. So that was, I pity the people who are under construction, but anyway, it's good to see the department's so busy. Uh, comments or questions from council? No, keep up the good stuff then, Carl. Um, resolution, please. Or do we do the whole, all at once or?
Uh, be it resolved that the committee received the March twenty twenty-one building permit activity report as information.
Mover and a secondary, councillor Donaldson, councillor Roberts. Wood Roberts, sorry. And all in favor? And that's passed. Uh, Robert, the my bylaw update.
We're, uh, sorry, good afternoon now. Um, yeah, pretty straightforward with the uh, the report today. Uh, um, we're seeing our uh, our business licenses are actually starting to pick up. I've had two in the last couple of days. Um, it's coming up for their renewals, so they'll be emailing me and we'll be processing those licenses soon for the food vendors and and the campgrounds. Um, uh, just bringing attention to parking, uh, we are running low on on booklets there and we're just seeking staff direction on, on uh, looking at the administrative monetary penalty systems, or do we just continue with um, ordering ticket books? On that, um, the gate revenue, we can see at twenty forty-two oh six, uh, the gate's been running actually pretty smoothly after its um, uh, service that was done last had to be the end of February. So that was uh, that was good and we're happy with that right now. Um, I know the internet's down in that system and uh, so the gates are up today. Uh, other than that, there's been no uh, no big changes, no big complaints been submitted. We're still in our enforcement reporting and uh, we're still in our, now at our stay-at-home order. If there's any questions or anything I can uh, answer.
Uh, councillor, or mayor Roberts.
Okay, I know this is a little different, but you're chairing and I'm gonna ask a question. And my question is, can you remind council how much is the parking ticket? And then there's an early payment fee. Uh, and the last time that we changed the rates, if you know, you may not know.
I don't know when the rates were last changed. I know the parking bylaw is a two thousand and fourteen parking bylaw. Uh, whether they were the same price prior to that, um, unfortunately, I don't know. I can try to go back and see if we have if I have an older copy somewhere in in our files. Um, so for, are you referring to the uh, to the meters, uh, mayor Roberts?
Yes, the the meter's on the main street. So if someone uh, is in an expired meter, what is the parking ticket? And what, how much? And then I believe there's an early payment option. And I'll just, excuse me. I was on council when we raised the rate to the current rate, but sadly, I can't remember when that was. So, uh, but I'll, I'll say it's been a long time. That said, we got a lot of kerfuffle at the time for raising that, as we always do. Um, raise, raise rates, but uh, at that time, it was barely even paid. I think a, a ticket was like three or five dollars. Just someone just said, well, then I'll, I'll just take the ticket. Uh, so it, it, we can, we can find it when that is, but how much is the ticket and what is the payment schedule?
So the uh, the set fine for a parking ticket at our meters downtown is ten dollars. Um, if you pay that fine within seven days, there is a voluntary early payment of seven dollars.
You muted. You're on mute.
Sorry about that. I think what Robert's asking um, for direction on as well as to whether you want him to bring forward more information on the administrative penalty system, um, which would take away that ten and set that early uh, reduction. Um, as from what I understand, Robert, is that correct?
That's correct.
Um, so it would counsel like, or committee like him to bring back more information regarding that to a future meeting?
It was one of the questions. I had no idea what he was talking about there.
Okay.
So, um, that was gonna be my question if I was on the floor was uh, was to ask, what is, what's involved in the AMP system? And uh, what are the differentiating? So uh, probably report back would be great. Carl?
So just a, a some, a bit of a summary on on amps. Uh, so what it does is it takes, if somebody wants to fight a parking ticket, it takes it out of the court system and basically we'd have to point a hearing officer and a screening officer here with the township. So if somebody would come in, the screening officer would review it if they feel that it's uh, you know, that it's, it's justified, the parking ticket is justified, then they can go to the hearing office. So it just be, it could be two staff members or it could be, um, you know. So that's basically what it does. It takes it out of the court system. Um, is there anything else to that, Robert?
Um, it would remove the voluntary, the voluntary uh, fine, but um, uh, the process would follow similar court processing, so um, paying it within fifteen days, not paying within that fifteen days, it would be issued a uh, notice of impending conviction or a, a neck letter. And then usually it would go to court from there, but from the, instead of it going to the courts, it would either we have the option of sending it out to a creditor or we can put it up to the NTO for, for plea denial.
Councillor Clark?
Um, yeah, or Robert or or Carl, um, but how many, how many of these infractions in a month are we dealing with? You know, is, is it, is it large enough for you to have to worry about putting together, um, you're like an administrative, administrative process like this?
That's, that's one thing that I was, uh, we, we were having the discussion on is that I don't think Robert's ever had a, somebody, one of his tickets. And I think with uh, previous bylaw officers, since I've been here, there was only one person fighting a ticket. So it's not like it's a, it's, we're being overwhelmed or the court system's being overwhelmed with parking tickets. It's just the process, if somebody wanted to fight a parking ticket, um, Robert's gonna have to go down to what, Lindsay, um, to hear the case, you know, defend it. So that's the only reason why we thought, well, if this is the time to explore amps a little further and take it out of that court system and somebody could just come here and fight their ticket and, you know, give pace to somebody, that's kind of what we're looking for. Does council have any um, appetite for that process? We can explore it a little further, bring back a report. If not, we're not gonna waste our time on it.
Councillor Smith, I can see your eyebrows there. I think we're getting ready.
Uh, given the uh, the limited activity, um, it kind of has to ask why we would uh, you know, change the process. We're gonna change something. I go back to where Mayor Roberts started. I raised this a couple of years ago. I can't believe that we accept a seven dollar payment as uh, you know, uh, a parking ticket. In fact, somebody asked me, I'd say, best way to park in Halliburton is don't put money in the mirrors. Keep an envelope in your truck with seven dollars in it. And if you happen to get a ticket, take the seven dollar envelope over to the municipal office and pay your, your fine. I mean, elsewhere, tickets are, are, you know, thirty-five, forty dollars. Um, that's how they get the people to make sure they use the meters and uh, pay their fair way. And uh, and so, you know, I would be uh, we're gonna spend some time at this. I would take that and say at a, at a minimum, a parking ticket ought to be twenty-five dollars. People want to complain? Well, let them complain. The, the way to get around it is to put your money in the mirror. It's not, uh, it's not like you have to incur a parking ticket. So, um, to me, that's where I'd spend the time. Let's uh, raise the amount of the parking ticket to an amount that encourages people to actually populate the meter with their cash.
Again, uh, councillor McKechnie?
Uh, I, I don't agree with that at all because I don't think our main street needs um, any more business loss or people upset, reason not to want to come to Halliburton and shop. Um, I think ten dollars is more than enough and seven dollar incentive to pu- to um, pay it early is, is, is good enough. Like I say, people on the main street, especially in these times that we're in right now, I don't like using it as an excuse, but things are tough out there. We sure don't need to discourage any more people coming to town. Twenty-five dollar sign, uh, parking ticket in, in Halliburton to me is a little ridiculous. That's just my opinion.
Thanks. And the other comments, other councillors? Uh, regards to the AMP system, do we uh, consensus then for them, for staff to bring back a report? At that time, they could look at uh, possible fee, the, the parking uh, fines. Uh, at the same time, Carl, that'd be, Robert, that'd be acceptable? Councillor, or Mayor Roberts, sorry.
That's right. Uh, sorry, you asked Robert a question if you want to answer. I was just gonna suggest councillor Wood Roberts uh, take that to her next BIA meeting if she can. And if, if for whatever reason, she's not able to attend, to make sure because we've dealt with the BIA every step of the way when we took the um, individual meters out, put pay in display. Uh, it was actually the BIA, BIA saying they still wanted paid parking on the main street. They were in support of that because otherwise he would, you know, if you get there at eight o'clock in the morning, then your car is there till five. So they, they wanted those to be the premium spots. We do provide parking, an enormous amount of parking right here at the municipal office and in other locations of, on York Street, in the town dock. So I, I'd really just like to hear the input of, from the BIA. Of, of the, the price of the parking ticket, not what parking costs, but if someone doesn't, if their expired meter or, or haven't bought a ticket at all, but the BIA thinks of that.
Well, that'd be part of the whole uh, for asking staff to bring back report on the AMP system would be included, a look, a review of the parking fees then, or uh, penalty fees? Is that what we're asking staff to do then? Looking for consensus or disagreement, councillor Clark?
Um, yeah, I, I, you know, given that we would lose Rob for a whole day if, if somebody disputed a, a, a parking uh, charge, the AMP system doesn't make, doesn't make sense. Um, if we keep it at the ten dollars, chances of somebody, somebody challenging it are a lot less. So, I think it's a win-win. And as, as, you know, as Walter mentioned, you know, we're, we're trying to promote our business for our downtown. Um, I think the only issue we really have is where the actual store owners themselves are parking in front of the stores and complaining that there's not enough parking spot for customers. Um, so if there's some way of moving these people along and having them park in the municipal parking lots or elsewhere where they're they're not taking prime space on the street would be good, but that's something that can be addressed as, as Andrea was mentioning through the, you know, the businesses downtown business association.
Okay, um, any other comments then? Staff direction would be, I, I think uh, uh, report on the AMP system is, is warranted. Uh, just so that we have a clear idea of the differences between them and what the impacts might be. And then uh, secondary is Nancy Wood Roberts, councillor Wood Roberts can follow up with the BIA, uh, get their, get some feedback on parking fines. And we'll go from there. That'd be appropriate. Uh, resolution then, Mallory, with the adjustments.
Yeah, do we want to include that we want staff to review the parking, parking, parking ticket penalty fees for the May committee meeting? Just an assumption that we'll have some feedback. Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, um, be it resolved that the committee, the whole acknowledges receipt of the March twenty twenty-one bylaw update report and further recommends that council direct staff to gather information on the administrative monetary penalty system and review the current parking parking ticket penalty fees and report back to the May committee of the whole meeting.
Mover and a secondary, please. Councillor Clark, councillor McKechnie, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Uh, next, the encroachment bylaw. Uh, Robert, again.
So this was uh, directed by, I, I believe it came from the CEO and, and legal counsel um, to review the encroachment. to review the encroachment bylaw and suggest some changes that were proposed to the encroachment bylaw as, as committee can see, all the changes that were made were made in yellow. And these were to deal with constant offenders and repeat offenders on the encroachment bylaw. If there's any questions or anything, I can try and answer.
Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I, I noticed on there, Rob, that we're dealing with public use of talented property. I, you know, where we've got a right of way, that type of thing. And, and we've got a couple of situations throughout the, the township where, you know, people are putting docks on railways or by law. Some people are using them for access to their, their, their principal property. Traditionally, where we've only had a couple of, I guess, licenses of agreement for the sounds of overtime. So, it hasn't been a big deal so far, but I think what we're, we're seeing is, is it is getting to be bigger. So, we're gonna have to have what I feel is consider some kind of a process, you know, for reviewing and approving these encroachments or license of occupation or license of agreement or whatever we go to. With the zoning bylaw process where there is a neighborhood impact, people are advised, you know, the neighbors are advised where there's a changes happening, so they have a chance to comment. With the current process for the license of agreements, we have nothing in place. It comes up as a surprise for the neighborhoods. So, we've got to somehow address this within your, within your current bylaw if possible.
Yeah, I, I can, I can understand, I understand what you're saying, Counselor Clark. I, I think that the, the process for public notification and consultation should be left to the, the approval notice, not in the, the enforcement of it. So, I know that planning deals with the license of occupation and then would submit that to council for council's review and approval. So, I think maybe that can be something that's added into the approval process of that license about occupation if council desires it that way.
We currently have a policy that deals with those types of approvals for encroachments. People have to seek approval if they put stuff on municipal property or right of ways or whatever else. So, yeah, currently planning reviews those applications and, and brings those forward to council. So, maybe a change to the policy is something that council could seek if, if that's the direction that council wants to go.
Just a question too, does this include unpurchased shoreline allowances?
Anything owned by the.
Anything. Who, that could open up a a whole new department under you, Carl and Robert. Counselor Smith.
Yeah, I just, in this draft, we've got section 3.3. It has the, you know, the additional one and a half percent interest rate per month on any amounts outstanding. So, again, I advocate for a generic statement in all bylaws, linking back to whatever rate we set, like actually.
Yeah, that was something that was, that was already in the bylaw. I didn't change that at all, this was written before my time here. But again, I can talk with Barbara and see what the, what we can do with that as well.
Any other comments on the bylaw revisions as presented? Not seeing any then, Mallory.
Be resolved that the committee of the whole recommends that the revised encroachment bylaw be brought forward to council for adoption.
Mover in a second there please, Counselor Smith. Second there please. Counselor McKechnie, all in favor? And that's carried, thank you. Thanks gentlemen. Check summary, Barb, up next.
Good afternoon, yes, so total disbursements for March amounted to just over $4.3 million. And I would just like to note that of that amount there, $3.3 million represents the transfer payments for the first quarter to both the county and the boards of education.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, report, short and sweet this. Counselor Clark?
You missed the sewage report.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I got the backwards, okay.
We can do both resolutions at once.
Let's face it, check summary then I guess first. Resolution please, Mallory.
Okay, solution for the check summary first? So, be resolved that committee of the whole acknowledges receipt of the March 2021 check summary.
Mover and a second there, Counselor Wood Roberts, Counselor Donaldson, all in favor? And that's passed, now we'll go back, the monthly sewage report.
Oh, nothing really has changed in terms of uptick on the report. As an average year to date, we're, we're pretty well on par with last year. And basically now we've had 12 full months of COVID and comparing apples to apples.
Questions, Counselor Smith?
Robert, any explanation for, yeah, March number at extended care, it's sort of, you know, about half the typical monthly amount and it's not a facility I would have thought would have that aberration like that.
Yes, so typically what happens if we don't get a meter reading from any of the tenants, then we basically just use the prior month's readings, so you'll notice January and February are the same and we were able to true up the number in March.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, resolution please.
Be resolved that the committee of the whole acknowledges receipt of the March 2021 monthly metered sewer sewage reading report.
Mover in a second there please, Counselor Smith, Counselor McKechnie, all in favor? And that's passed, thank you. And that concludes the open session unless I've missed something else. We'll move into closed and ask, it'll just be a couple of minutes to move over into close, so thank everyone that's been watching and we'll be back.
I'll read the resolution.
I'm not sure on this process here.
Yeah, don't worry, yeah, okay. Be resolved that the committee of the whole adjourned its regular meeting at 1:42 PM to discuss matters pursuant to section 239-2 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended pertaining to personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, a proposed acquisition of land in the township of Havlock, that's property abutting the Kinesis Lake Waste disposal site, litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, and that's public works and building departments.
I need a mover in a second on that or is it just, that's just the way?
We need a mover and a second there, yeah.
Counselor Smith, Counselor Clark. I try to pay attention, Mayor Roberts, but sometimes I drift on when we're moving.
Doing a great job, thank you.
It's, it's a lot easier sitting in the audience. I got a mover, so all in favor? And you're good. Thank you, and going screens off for a minute, Mallory or?
Yes, please, everyone turn their video off while we transition. We're live.
Okay, and we're back from closed session. And I don't think you said anything else on the agenda to adjourn and to hope that Madam Mayor is feeling better in the future.
Thanks, you've done an excellent job, I, it's been, I appreciate that very much, thank you.
So, I guess we just need a motion to adjourn please.
Okay, I'll read it. So, be it resolved that the committee of the whole adjourned its meeting held on April 13th, 2021 at 3:31 PM.
Moved by Counselor Donaldson, second there please. Counselor Wood Roberts, all in favor? That's carried, thank you very much folks, long day again, but lots of, lots of stuff accomplished, thank you, have a safe day.
Bye.